We last left off in Friday evening, and again, there was an issue in regards to moving forward on, again, testimony from representatives of the administration as well as their, as representative of organizations that have been hired by the administration in regards to, to, in particular, the, the provision that we have in front of us, which deals with the refinancing of a 1993 bond. But obviously, it's tied in also to, to the measures that will be introduced in, in, in regards to the securitization of tobacco settlement, as well as the, I, I've, and again, we're all clear of it, that there will be some, a senator or two that will be moving forward on another motion for, for, obviously, inclusion of Bill 168, or portions of it as a part of this budget bill. So with that, there was a question, I think, from Senator Guthers for a legislative legal opinion. We currently have the Legislative Legal Counsel in, in, in the floor this, this morning. The Legislative Legal Counsel has, over the weekend, worked a, a legal opinion that has been distributed to members of the body. I'm going to request that the Legislative Legal Counsel read out the opinion based on the question put out by Senator Guthers. After that, we will allow for one round of comments or questions in regards to the legal issues that were, that arose as a result of the questions and statements made on Friday. Once disposed of that, we will then go into, again, the, the actual bill in front of us. Again, as, and to reiterate what was, was voiced out in, in, in the rules of, for the committees whole, we'll have two rounds of questions, for general, general questions on, on the bill, on the borrowing provision, and then, of course, after that, we'll allow for a section by section move on through the bill. And with that, I'd like to, again, welcome this morning, the Legislative Legal Counsel, Councilor David Highsmith.
Thank you.
So David, Attorney, if you could render the Legislative Legal Opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, Mina Bente Nuebe Lesla Toran Guahan, has been considering the Fiscal Year 2008 Budget Act, also known as Bill 143, in the Committee of the Whole for the past two weeks. On September 14th, 2007, the committee began considering a bond issue that has been processed by the Guam Economic Development Commerce Authority, GEDCA. The dep, the director, Deputy Director of GEDCA, a GEDCA consultant from the Bank of America, and a representative of the proposed underwriter, appeared to make a presentation to the committee, but several senators objected, stating that hearing the presentation would constitute a premature legislative approval of the proposed bond issue, and that it was either unethical or inappropriate for the underwriter to be present. Senator Judy Guthers, in particular, requested a legal opinion as to whether correct procedures had been followed. After consultation with Vice Speaker Ed Calvo and others, I am providing that opinion. Title 12 GCA 50103K authorizes GEDCA to obtain funds for the government of Guam through bond issues. That same section also charges GEDCA with, quote, "acting as the centralized and exclusive financial planner and investment banker for all the agencies and instrumentalities of the government." Section 50103K also mandates that GEDCA, quote, "shall not issue or sell any bond without the approval of Iles La Torra and Guahan of the terms and conditions of the bond," unquote. Hence, the inclusion of the sections regarding this bond in the present budget act. Title 12 GCA 50103 describes the purposes and policies behind bond issuance, and the next section, Section 50103.1, mandates the procedure GEDCA must follow when issuing bonds. That process begins when GEDCA retains experienced bond counsel, Section 50103.1A. GEDCA then issues requests for proposals to at least five potential underwriters. Section 50103.1B1, if GEDCA does not receive responses from at least two underwriters to the RFP, it is canceled, and GEDCA must issue a new RFP. In order to protect the integrity of the procurement process, GEDCA designates one person to handle all communications with the applicants, and members of the GEDCA board are prohibited from communicating with them. Section 50103.1B3 and 4, the board must assemble a quorum to open and examine the proposals, and then, by majority vote, make an award. Section 50103.1B5, the board then notifies the awardee, unless it narrows the field to two applicants, and negotiates between them. Section 50103.1B6, Title 12 GCA 50103.2 mandates that the board make the award to the offeror whose terms are most advantageous to Guam, but may consider only the criteria set forth in the RFPs. Title 12 50103K mandates legislative approval, quote, "of the terms and conditions of the bonds," unquote. GEDCA has interpreted this to mean that Iles La Torra approves the bonds after the aforementioned process is completed and an awardee has been identified, although 50103K is not specific on the point. According to the Director and Deputy Director, GEDCA has complied with the procedure mandated by Title 12 GCA 50103.1. A copy of the request for proposal is attached. The GEDCA board, by majority vote, selected Citigroup as the board under, as the bond underwriter. It would seem, therefore, that GEDCA has complied with Guam law in selecting the tentative underwriter, and that Iles La Torra may now approve or disapprove the proposed bond. Several senators voiced their disapproval of this procedure on September 14th, but it was undertaken in compliance with previously enacted legislative requirements, Section Some of the objecting senators also believe that Title 12 GCA 50103.1B4 and 5 prohibit board members from discussing the award with potential awardees, and that, therefore, Citigroup should not have approved, appeared before Iles La Torra. However, it is evident from the placement of subsections 4 and 5 in Section 50103.1 that they apply only to the time period leading up to the tentative award by the GEDCA board. These subsections apply only to the board and not to Iles La Torra. In fact, once the bids are opened, the board is specifically authorized to negotiate with two different offerors, 50103.1B6. The procurement process is complete. It is now up to Iles La Torra to either, either approve or disapprove GEDCA's choice of offerors and the terms and conditions of the bonds. Therefore, I believe there is nothing inappropriate about the appearance of Citigroup at the Committee of the Whole on September 14th, 2007. The Committee of the Whole enjoys great flexibility in determining how to proceed. It may consult government officials and such other persons as it finds advisable. Nothing in the ethics portions of the standing rules forbids the appearance of private parties before Iles La Torra, regardless of whether they are seeking a government contract. See Standing Rule 29. Title 4 GCA, Chapter 15, Article 2, prescribes ethical standards for elected officials, but does not prohibit this procedure. Section 15206 thereof requires open bidding, but that has occurred. A problem might arise if one of the parties did not disclose his interest in the proceeding, but both GEDCA and Citigroup made it clear that Citigroup was the tentative awardee, and was there to explain the terms of the proposed agreement. See Title 4 GCA 15208. The agreement and the qualifications of the Citigroup have been examined by GEDCA's financial advisor, the Bank of America, and the GEDCA board, and are ultimately subject to the scrutiny of Iles La Torra itself. If this body finds the terms and conditions of the proposed bond agreement are contrary to the best interest of the people or of the government of Guam, it may vote to disapprove the agreement. That will make an end of it, and GEDCA will have to go back to the drawing board. On a final note, I do not believe that Guam's procurement law, Title 5 GCA, Chapter 5, applies to complex financial arrangements, agreements, such as bond issues. Chapter 5 applies to construction, supplies, and services, Title 5 GCA 5030. However, construction is defined as the building and renovation of public structures, Section 5030G. Services is defined as the furnishing of labor, time, and effort, Section 5030S, and supplies is defined to mean movable items and leases of real property, Section 5030U. The GEDCA board must follow its own procurement procedure, as mandated by Title 12 GCA 50103.1, and the board makes the award, not the chief procurement officer. If you have any questions regarding this opinion, please contact me immediately.
Thank you very much, Attorney Highsmith. And with that, we will now, again, afford the body with comments or questions in regards to the legal questions that have been brought up. Senator Wampad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One first question I'd like to ask is that, are we getting any kind of opinion from Clark?
Would you like?
Because I know last week you had read, read something from the GCA, and we weren't able to ask you any questions. Have you written an opinion as well?
I've, I've provided my opinions to Mr. Highsmith, and he's incorporated them.
Oh, so your opinion then was incorporated with what was read?
Is incorporated in, in here also, yes. And actually, I believe Mr., and his opinion is more comprehensive and deals with other issues that we didn't touch on, so I feel his opinion is more both comprehensive and accurate.
Okay. The other question I have, and I don't know who's going to answer it, but just on page one, I'm kind of disturbed when it says here in this sentence, line three, "The committee began considering a bond issue that has been processed by the Guam Economic Development," and throughout, of course, the mandates, and, and if you look at the, normally, it is the legislature would decide whether we're going to, want to, to borrow, and the legislature would decide on a dollar amount, and not necessarily a, the committee. And, and somehow, we seem to be going backwards here, rather than starting at the, the very beginning, by saying, "We, as a body, would have to decide whether we want a $90 million bond, a $250 bond, or a $340 million bond," because, I mean, those are three fingers that is being thrown out. And, and I'd like to find out, basically, whoever can answer that question, and I'd just like to ask my last one before I run out of my time, is that we would like to see a copy of that RFP. When was it issued? Because I understand the attachment is not the, the correct copy. And I don't know if you're taking notes, but on page three as well, the last sentence of the second paragraph, "It is now up to the legislature to either approve or disapprove GEDCA's choice of offers and the terms and condition," and we don't even know what that dollar amount is. So this brings me back to the very first question, is that did this body decide on 90, 250, or 340? Because now you're, you're coming back to ask us whether we're going to approve or disapprove, and we don't even know, we haven't even made a decision on, on either one of those bonds. So I think we're kind of putting the, the cart before the horse here, so I don't know if anyone, on who will be answering my questions.
My name is Tina Garcia. I'm the Financial Services Division Manager and currently the Acting Deputy Administrator. When, before we issue these RFPs, GEDCA is approached by either a, the, someone from the administration or the legislature, indicating an interest in moving forward on a potential financing. Back last year in June 28, 2006, GEDCA issued an RFP to refinance, to refinance the 1993 general obligation bonds and add a $35 million new money component as a new tax-exent general obligation issue of the government of Guam. When GEDCA issues these RFPs, we make it clear that we are structuring the financing, we are looking, we are, we are canvassing the market to see who can come up with the best structure for the government of Guam at the lowest cost. Our, our RFPs are issued out to at least 20 different participants that have indicated an interest in financing for the government. And we are required to receive a minimum of, of two proposals. In this case, we received four different proposals from U.S. bankers, and from there, we evaluate their proposal, their structuring, and the cost, and we, we award an, an underwriter with the understanding that the final structure is not determined unless we get the public law approved, or unless we get the initiative approved by public law.
Senator Wampad, we're going to allow a second, well, actually, I'm going to allow you, what, do you have a follow-up question, one more follow-up question? I'm, I'm going to kind of be a little bit more flexible with the five minutes, just because I'm not going to allow one more round of legal, dealing with legal issues. I think it's been very clear from the statements being made, but continue. You have a follow-up question?
It's, it's kind of hard to, I'd like, that's why I wanted to see the RFP, because we wanted to get the date also as to when, because I understand you're saying 206 for the 1993, and, I mean, I, I don't remember.
Has the clerk passed out this? Or, I have it in front of me.
Santa Judy, Santa Judy, I think was sent to you.
Can't hear.
The, the wrong RFP was attached to the opinion letter.
The wrong RFP.
The correct one was passed out.
This is the one, the signed one.
It's in the back, it's in the back.
Santa Judy, it's right here, it's signed.
Sure, you'll be next. Senator, there's, there's the RFP. Do you have, I'll allow you one more follow-up question?
Okay, so, wait. 28149 was the budget bill that was passed, and, and what was the date? Usually, that was September when that was passed. However, I'm looking at the date in which this was issued, it was even before that, it was June 28, 2006. So that means you, you, you had no idea in terms of where the legislature's going, and already, this, you're jumping the gun by already putting out an RFP even before we decided.
Santa, this is, this is for, for the anticipation general obligation bond issue, for, for the, the, it's right here, for the anticipate general obligation bond issue, the government intends to refinance existing 93 general obligations bond and add a $35 million new money component. It's right here. In anticipation.
In order for you to anticipate this, aren't you supposed to get your direction, then, from the legislature, basically saying that then, you know, you are authorized to do this?
That's what I did today.
Yeah, but, I mean, no, but you can't, the thing is, is that you're, you're here, and you're going to answer questions on the bond, you're the underwriters, and you're going to be biased already, should you give any information to, to us on any one of those proposals that are floating. I know we, we have a 90, there's an amendment to put in a 250, and we understand now the administration wants both of them, so that's a 340. We, you know, we haven't even decided on one or the other, and already, we're talking about, you know, going out and getting it, the underwriters are here, you're going to be influenced already one way or the other.
I, I hear what you're saying. We, we issued this at the request of, I believe there was a request to look into it, with the full understanding that nothing is closed. There are a number of ways to structure the financing, be it a 20-year bond, a 30-year bond, upfront interest payments, or back end, and that's what the consultants help us make that decision by telling us what the ultimate cost is, but in no way are, are they here to close the deal today. They understand that should the legislature not pass the bond authorization, that they walk away from the table.
One more. One more. Well, activity two. Who requested that you, you know, put out an RFP? That's the first question. The second is, when you put out the RFP, what dollar amount were, did you put it out at? Did you put it out at 90, 250, or 340, or whatever the numbers are?
In this particular case, we received a request from Vice Speaker Calvo, and this was being considered for last year's budget initiative, and, and so, so that's why this was issued back then. It was subsequently approved in 28149, and the, the authorization to borrow this money at the $35 million. But...
Okay, thank you very much. Senator is, I'm going to allow now for, I think we gave a little extra time there, but, Senator Rispio?
Thank you very much. I'm looking through the RFP that you submitted, and the issue date was June 28, 2006. If you guys are to argue that this is, even give you some latitude here, that you'd had that existing authority from 2003, that the 27th legislature authorized it, never happened, that authority and any other outstanding authority was repealed by a budget act to, an amendment in the budget act for fiscal year 2007. This RFP that I have is for a refinancing of existing 1993 GO bonds with a $35 million money component. The, the substitute version that's offered by the acting speaker calls for $79 million worth of distribution of proceeds, and then there's another option of 250 million, that's $329 million right now worth of bond borrowing authority. You know, are, are any of you concerned that an RFP was put out for the refinancing of a, a 93 GO bond with only $35 million additional borrowing component? You only had four individuals, underwriters, responding? Had you had put out a proposal of $329 million worth of bond borrowing activity, don't you think you would have solicited more responses?
We have a, a distribution list. We have a distribution list, and we do distribute it, and we, when we did the first RFP for, and, and again, I go back to what the vice speaker said earlier, there, there were different borrowing structures being requested. There's the 250 deficit financing, and that was issued separately, under a separate RFP, and then the 1993 was a refinancing with working capital, for, work, uh, capital for working, for capital projects, sorry. And so, again, they were two different initiatives being requested, and, and both groups received, I mean, our, our distribution list of about 20 different companies.
But your RFP was very clear that it was for a refinancing of a 93 GO bond with a $35 million additional borrowing component.
Yes.
Now, had you had issued an RFP for $329 million worth of borrowing, do you think you would have got more responses?
I, I can't.
It's more commission, right? This is all, this is all commission-based, right?
But normally, yeah, and, and we, we do get anywhere from four to five responses on these RFPs, so.
You mean, it's like putting an R.
I would say that this one, the two, the, at the time, the deficit bond was a higher deal. We received five responses. This one, we received four responses.
I mean, it's like putting an RFP for a basic Toyota model, and you end up purchasing a Lexus. So the RFP, the, the product in the end is very different from what you RFPed in the beginning. Is any of, any one of you concerned about the, the disparity?
Senator, Senator, my name is Ali Lim Tiakum from Bank of America Securities. I serve as GEDCA's financial advisor with regard to the bond market. I think that, to answer your question, the, I don't know that a larger bond issue put out to RFP would attract more bidders. There are probably about four to five firms that, that are experienced in working with the government of Guam, and, you know, in their, in trying to provide a continuing, continuing service to the government, they answer all RFPs equally. So I don't know that, you know, a $300 million bond issue would receive more responses from the market than a, you know, a $100 million bond issue. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, this was issued more than a year ago. Couple of months ago, the legislature had a presentation from a group that worked on the CNMI refinancing, and they were able to get an excellent deal based on the full faith and credit of the NMI government alone. I don't believe, Mr. Speaker, that we've opened this RFP up competitively and appropriately to attract the best deal for the government of Guam, and that's the concern that I want to raise. The, again, the product we're going to get is very different from what this RFP calls for, and, and then, based on the previous speaker's comments, I, the, it's very clear that the legislature would authorize the issuance and author, ultimately authorization of the bond. It's not really clear if GEDCA, for me, if GEDCA has the authority to issue a request for proposal based on an assumption of what the legislature might do, so that's probably some gray area right now. And before my time runs up, who's George Bomba Procurement Officer of GEDCA? Is the same George Bomba that's different?
George Bomba is, is she our chief procurement officer for GEDCA.
Okay, because I'm just wondering if he was wearing another hat. So this op, in conclusion, this RFP is obviously very different from what the legislature's attempting to do here this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Rispio. Again, is there any other, Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the work of Mr. Highsmith and the input from Attorney Clark as well, but I'm wondering if we need, and I know this might slow us down a little bit, maybe for 30 minutes, but is it wise, perhaps, to consult with the Attorney General's office to make sure that we're not going to have any conflicts later in the process, should we proceed now? I'm just kind of worried that we may run into a problem at her office with either bond if we don't clarify our actions at this point before we proceed further. So that's my question, Mr. Chairman. Do you think it would be advisable, perhaps, to ask for the Attorney General to come over here to look at this before we proceed?
You're asking the chairman? I think what we need to do, we will afford that request, we will allow Legislative Legal Counsel to send a co, a formal correspondence to the Attorney General, but again, this process has been, this process has been moving. You have the opportunity to speak to the Legislative Legal Counsel. We have GEDCA representatives here, they're here to answer your questions. It'll be the determination of the chairman that we will move forward on the bond issue, at least section by section. You have all the opportunities to ask the questions, and hopefully, they satisfy your questions. And as we're moving along, we will be sending a correspondence to the, to the Attorney General, and then, and then a request as a response. But again, obviously, I, I'm concerned about, about a, there, you know, we are also, we've gone through a budget process, and we've gone through in a very orderly manner. What I'm hoping for is that we don't have any dilation of processes occurring, which is, well, basically, or dilatory, which is where there are obstructions to moving forward in the budget process. So in order to keep, to ensure that we are not slowing down the process, we will continue, and then, and, and again, we can, we can receive an answer from the Attorney General, but at the same time, it doesn't change us from moving forward.
No, I want to, I want to raise the point of personal privilege.
That, that, you're out of order.
No, a point of personal privilege is not out of order. Are you?
What is the point of privilege?
Are you implying that because of our, our inquiries, we're being obstructionist of the current budget process?
No, I'm not. I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, actually, and I want to be very clear on that. I do not consider anyone here trying to be an obstructionist. We have been moving in an orderly process. Again, we had, we did have individuals that had been here for several days to answer questions in regards to the, to, to the borrowing initiatives. Unfortunately, they left on Saturday, so we do have a representative of the council of, of, excuse me, the, the advisors to GEDCA, but I want to move forward in the process. So again, we, we have every opportunity, we have a legal counsel for GEDCA, we have the Legislative Legal Counsel. We will make good in a request, and I'm going to request that we make a, a request to the Attorney General for an opinion on this thing, but I don't believe we should stop the process and, and, and not move along until we receive an answer for her. I think we should continue on. So continue, Senator Guthers, your time is moving.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that, and I, I think we should ask the Attorney General to look at this very quickly.
Sure.
At the same time, just a suggestion, if it becomes an issue, we can always separate it out from the budget bill.
Sure.
So we do have that option to separate it out from the budget bill if it's going to delay us in getting a budget approved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Senator Luhon?
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Let me just get this straight because based on the project overview here in Section 1.0, it was based on the general obligation bonds, 1993 general obligation bond with the additional $35 million. What does the 1993 general obligation bonds come to as a total of that?
The, the total outstanding amount of the 93 general obligation bonds is approximately 88.7 million.
88.7 million?
Correct.
Okay, and then the additional $35 million to that, right?
Correct.
Okay, now, obviously, what we're, we're entertaining at this point is, is the amendment that was passed to entertain the $90 million bond proposal as well as there is an impending, a possible amendment of, of 250 million. So, let me just get this straight. Now, it really doesn't matter the amount, all we're talking about, again, is, is the bond conditions and all that, right? So, because I, I think there's a confusion as to what bond we're talking about because based on the RFP that was awarded, it was the 1993 plus the additional $35 million. But what we're entertaining at this point also is an amendment for the 90 million, but there's also pending is a 250 million. So, let me get this straight now, what we're entertaining is bond conditions in general, regardless of, of the amount. Is, is that pretty accurate?
Getca-
Because I, I don't know what we're working with at this point. Based on the RFP, it's 88.7 million plus the 35 million, but what we have before us also is, is the amendment for the 90 million. So, again, we're, we're dealing with, with, with bonds in general, terms and conditions. Is that what we're working on right now? I need to get that straight because I don't know what we're-
Actually, what we're working, and that was my concern about what Senator, and as Chair, I, I'm usually not compelled to answer questions, but obviously, this is a confusion. And that was my concern about the question by the minority leader, we're confusing issues here. We have a piece of paper in front of us that deals with a particular borrowing initiative.
Sure.
Now, obviously, there was a substitution made and the substitution was made as a result of when we had advisors coming into Guam recently, over the past two or three days, their ability to sit down and discuss with Getca and with our, with the Office of Finance and Budget about the current market conditions. And that is why, if you look at the new language, it's not 90 million, but obviously, we're going down to a level at about 77 level based on now the current market conditions. And that's the reason why we bring in, again, these financial advisors. So, this is separate in part with any Bill 168 or any other initiative.
So, we're talking about borrowing issues in general as opposed to amounts?
I believe so. I, I believe that the RFP issued last year was intended for the, for the refinancing of the 1993 bond.
With the 35 million additional.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what we're dealing with. So, so that's the total amount we're dealing with as opposed then to the 90 million.
I believe it was the intent to issue 35 million in new money.
Okay, because I think that's where the confusion is because there's different amounts out there.
Right.
There's a, there's a proposed amendment for 250. We, we, we authorized to talk about the amendment, we agreed about the amendment for 90 million to discuss, but then we also have, again, that's why I asked in regards to the amount. So, basically, Getca's coming from the perspective of we're dealing with the RFP, 88.7 general obligation with the additional 35 million. So, that's the understanding with that.
And I think that Getca can answer as to whether or not the RFP was limited to 35 million, that's another, that's a whole separate question. I think the intent was to refinance the existing 93 obligation.
What I want to clarify again is the amount or is it in just in general terms, borrowing conditions?
I believe it's general terms.
General terms.
And, and I don't know, can I make a point of clarification, Senator?
There, there was a statement made earlier, please clarify for point of information.
Just in response to Senator Respijo's question, the, I'm aware of the group that met with the legislature a few months back regarding the CNMI general obligation financing. The, just to clarify, this, this proposal on the table that we're reviewing to refund the 1993 general obligation bonds and issue new money, whatever the amount is, is a pledge of the full faith and credit of the government. It's not a revenue bond issue and it's not a limited obligation bond issue. So, that's one point I wanted to clarify as well as the group that met with the legislature several months back had also responded to this RFP and their fees were higher and therefore they weren't selected as a lead underwriter.
I'm going to allow you additional time there.
Okay, so, just, just one additional thing. So, in Getca, in Getca's point of view, you'll be answering based on the, the RFP that went out on the 93, the 93 general obligation funds as well as the additional 35 million. Is that correct? Okay. I, I'm still confused as to, as to what, because again, what, what this body had, had agreed to, to, to discuss, I guess, was the authorization of general obligation funds that says 90 million, but I think I'm honing into, into the confusion, so. But anyway, with that, Getca's point of view is from the, from the issuance of the RFP, the 93 general obligation funds with the additional 35 million intact, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Senator Lujan, Senator Mooney Barnes?
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just want to note for the record, just listening carefully to the retiring speaker and then the speakers before that and just trying to get a true clarification or verification on what this process has been. My only concern was when the, when the previous speaker from Mingilao, Senator Guthers, spoke about getting legal interpretation. I have to agree with that and my concern comes, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I hope you understand where this is. I don't want to stymie any process, but it's going to be very, very puzzling for me based on what has happened in the previous legislature. And then today, as we speak, as recent as, as this policymaking body, the proposals that were just answered, I mean, the questions that were just answered by the, by Senator Lujan, we just recently repealed the last, the, 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 the last RFP. And my concern is, we literally have to start from the drawing board and I need to know is if this is even in order based on the presentations that were given to us on the past. And, Mr. Chairman, I only ask that and I only ask that maybe we can take a, a 30-second or a minute recess so that I can talk to legal counsel, our legal counsel from the minority side so that I can get better clarification of what I need to do in as far as legal interpretation. And I say that, Mr. Chairman, is because as ultimately as we go through this whole process, the Attorney General's office has to be engaged and, and, and with the confusion that's going on right now, I am just concerned knowing that we just repealed the previous authorization in the last budget bill. So, I, I'm very, very concerned. If you can give me that minute recess, I'm going to ask for legal counsel's interpretation.
We'll allow the recess.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask our legislative counsel again to reiterate some of the points that he made reference to his legal opinion. Mr. Highsmith?
I, I'm not sure what needs to be reset. I think we followed the procedures, or that Getca has followed the procedures in 50103K, in 50103.1, that the, the question now is before the legislature, whether it would approve the choice of offerors in terms of the bonds and conditions, that there is nothing in Guam law that would make this unethical or inappropriate for the representatives to appear as they did. Also, on the question of the repeal and so forth, I believe that ultimately, the authority to authorize the bonds has always relied, has always resided in the legislature and that it can authorize or not authorize bond issuance at this point regardless of what it has done in the past. So, we might have to reword some of the section of the bill that we're talking about just to make it absolutely clear as to what we're doing, but I, I see no reason why the legislature can't authorize the proposed bond at this point in time.
Thank you, Speaker Calvo. Do you have any questions for the gentleman? All right, any other questions on the body with respect to the legality of this? If there are none, we're going to go out and move on to Section 1. Oh, is there a second round? Okay, anyone requesting a second round? Okay, Senator One Pad and then Senator Shimizu. All right, so Senator Shimizu first.
Thank you very much. I, I wanted to extend my sisus maasi to the people of this, especially Attorney Clark for, you know, coming in over the weekend and, you know, some of the things could have been taken care of, you know, in terms of, we've gone through this, at least this body in the past has gone through this and there's always that question. Can I make a suggestion that we give a, a CC copy to the Attorney General on this opinion? Because I think earlier, Mr. Clark had mentioned that it's both himself and the Attorney General should be also being able to give comments. So, my suggestion is for the legislature just to give a copy to the Attorney General and see, you know, for her information and review on it. Suggestion, it's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Shimizu. Senator One Pad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have one question and wondering since now that the RFP has been, been awarded and it is, the decision, of course, was made with the underwriters and, and my question is, will we be able to, to see a copy of, you know, what terms then were, were approved with the underwriters? With Citigroup and UBS?
The RFP and the proposal.
All we got is the request for proposal, but it doesn't list any terms.
We're going to confirm because there is, but we will show you our, our evaluation sheets and we can get you a copy of the proposals. We just have to be sensitive that some of the information is, you know, because it involves their private, you know, what their fees are and so on. Those are proprietary, but, but yes, we can share with you to review the proposals.
So, shall we, okay, well, that's good. The, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is just a comment now that I, that I really want to state and I understand, of course, both legal counsels are saying that Getca basically followed the procedures that were, you know, I'm not doubting that they followed the procedures and that there's nothing illegal here that was done. What I think is important to understand, there's this fine line, of course, that it's a majority rule, it's a numbers game. So, all you need is, you know, eight. So, therefore, whether during the 27th Guam legislature and the Democrats were in the majority and they were anticipating forced borrowing, they can guarantee the votes of eight. The legislature last year in the 28, 149 guaranteed, of course, an eight vote to, to authorize Getca to go out and issue, you know, a bond. Then in 2902, we repealed that, eight again repealed it. And then here we are again, the Getca, hopefully, I guess, if they have their eight on either side, then that will determine which bond is, of course, you know, the legislature will proceed with. So, yes, there is that fine line and, and granted, there may not be anything illegal, but so I just want everybody to know and the public to know as well is that it's a numbers game. Whoever has the eight will determine which bond will go through. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We are on Chapter 8, Section 1. All right, on Section 1, Senator Respijo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Section 1 is authorizing the issuance of bonds and it's very clear in this section that it'll be $90 million to fund certain expenses and then all these numbers are listed so it's clear where the proceeds are going to go. Here, here's another area which will generate some very important discussion on how this process is really kind of like the cart before the horse. In Section 1, you have the authorization of issuance of a bond, but earlier we learned that in June 28, 2006, Getca already did a request for proposal and the terms and conditions of this RFP are, I believe, going to be very different from what the terms and conditions in Section 1 is going to be. Can anyone care to comment?
Ali Wazbo. The terms and conditions or the scope of services for the RFP that was issued last year was to refinance the 1993 general obligation bond and issue 35 million of new money. That was the intent of the RFP and that was what the, what was structured in the RFP, the proposals to the RFP that came in. We, in working with Citigroup over the last year and as well as Senator Calvo's office, we've run numbers on an ongoing basis and what was concluded in the last week was that based on current market conditions, we were able to issue approximately 77 million of new money in keeping sort of the same structure that the original proposal intended and, and still refinance the existing bonds to provide debt service relief in the first three fiscal years.
But there's, there's some, some, some inconsistency with the scope, original scope of service from June 28, 2006 versus the scope of service contained in this Section 1 because you're going from $35 million worth of proceeds to 70, I believe it's 79 million dollars. Everybody keeps saying 77, I believe it's 79 million dollars worth of distribution of proceeds. In 12 GCA, Chapter 50, 50103F, it's very clear that the corporation is authorized to issue, sell or dispose of revenue bonds and other obligations from time to time under such terms and conditions the Guam legislature by appropriate legislation may prescribe. So, Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment in this section on the last sentence to include, a new last sentence to include, Getca shall first issue a new request for proposal pursuant to Title 12 GCA 50103F to satisfy specific authorization, issue a new series of bond pursuant to this act. So, I think it'll clear up whether or not it was proper or improper and now we have to have some litigation and have both sides argue their case. I want to offer this in amendment, so if this authorization passes, then Getca has the authorization now to issue an RFP. So, based on, on this new terms and conditions that we're deliberating on.
Senator Respijo, do you have any writing?
Yeah.
Okay. On, on, on the amendment, there's an objection. Yeah, we'll go ahead and wait for it to be passed out to the members, will be a couple minutes recess. There is a technical amendment on the Respijo amendment to change it to K as opposed to F. Is that correct, Senator Respijo? Correct. So, just change on the second line, F to K. All right, on the amendment, there's an objection. Any discussion? If, I'm sorry, Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, you know, I think if we adopt this amendment, this will be a very clean way to approach these proceedings from this point forward. Some of us have some concerns. As I said, I appreciate the legal opinions, but I'm still not comfortable. And I think if we're able to add this provision, this will remove many of the doubts that some of us have and allow us to proceed. So, I stand in support of this amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Any other speakers on the amendment? Senator One Pad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think a lot of the arguments, of course, or objections or questions that were offered, asked this morning rather was that, you know, the RFP basically that was put out and I understand that it's usually done in anticipation of actually the legislature approving such, but I think what would make a lot of the allevi- But I think what would make, um, a lot of the, alleviate a lot of, uh, you know, our concerns is that there, there really should be, uh, probably a new, um, RFP, you know, to go out because we're not dealing with thirty-five million anymore. You know, we're talking about seventy-nine million dollars. So, I, I, I would definitely support the, the request for a new RFP. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other speakers? If there are none, there's been an objection raised. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Alright, amendment fails. On Section One. On Section Two. I'm sorry, Senator Espada, on Section One?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Section One deals with, uh, a bunch of provisions and one of them being the use of the proceeds of the bonds. And, uh, I don't know who to ask or who to be the appropriate person to ask. But I have concerns in terms of the, um, under K two, thirty-five million dollars is to fund the capital expense items and capital improvement projects to go on public school systems in order to comply with every child's entitled to adequate education act as listed in Attachment B. And I read that verbatim from, uh, this amendment. Now we turn to Attachment, uh, B and we look at it and, um, you know, we see things that, that, that there's, this bond money is gonna cover. And, uh, we look at, say, for example, down near the bottom, we have teacher salary increase approved by the CSC at three point five percent, which totals amount of four point three million dollars. And then we have teacher reclassification and then employee salary increments for one point two million dollars. Um, somehow, and then, you know, you look around, you have vehicles, a van, a pickup, a forklift. We have vehicles which conclude a flatbed. And when you add them all together, we're closing in on about five million dollars. And that has nothing to do with capital improvement projects. So when we start talking about using bond money to finance salary increases, you know, and then we're talking about a bond that's gonna stretch over a period of thirty years, somehow, that thirty-five billion dollars doesn't seem justified. I'm just don't know who to ask, whether it should be perhaps the, you know, the, the Acting Chair of Education at this point in time or whether it may be the, uh, the, um, uh, finance, uh, I'm not sure who to ask, but who, who would I direct that question to in, uh, in terms of justifying that amount?
Um, as a proponent of the, uh, member, of course, to direct it to whoever you deem appropriate.
Well, then I, at this.
Senator Calvo appears to be willing to respond, so.
Okay, by me, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield to the question. Again, obviously, you know, again, the, the, the earlier speaker's concerned on some of the, um, the proceeds for, uh, use for this general oblig- this refinance of the nineteen ninety-three bond, a general obligation type bond. First of all, for historical reference, general obligation bonds have been passed. And some of the proceeds for general obligation bonds have been used for capital improvement, have been used for purposes and even, uh, operations. And though I personally, I'm, I'm not, uh, a big advocate of borrowing for operations, uh, it has happened in the past. And there is a minimal component of this borrowing initiative that deals with some of the operational requirements of the Guam Public School System. So obviously, again, when you look at the teacher classifications and increases, part of the borrowing proceeds do go to that as well. If you take a look at the numbers that are here, this were based on the, the discussions I've had with the Acting Chair of Education as well as listings provided to us by the Guam Public School System. In a perfect world, we could fund operations, uh, in totality. We could, we could fund, uh, capital improvement projects. We could fund capital expenditures. We could fund totally, uh, payment of obligations. But again, we've gone through a ten-year cycle, uh, of a depressed economy. And in through several legislatures and administrations, we built up a debt and a def- a deficit, and we built up also obligations. And in what this particular portion does in the, in the bond borrowing initiative, it, it tries to give the necessary resources to the Guam Public School System, uh, to fund a mandate that was also, uh, put forth by the legislature. Uh, that's all the comments I have at this point. I, so I'm not too sure whether the Acting Chair would like to, to, um, chime in this as well.
Mr. Chair, if I may, yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate that answer, but it doesn't really satisfy me. Again, I mean, when we start talking about salary increases on a bond over thirty years, I mean, that four point three no longer is a four point three that we're financing. I mean, you know, when we start talking about the debt service on that area alone, it causes some concern. Because yes, we should be, we should be, uh, so, um, so I would, I, I would like to make an amendment to at least, uh, take out. Well, I'll go ahead. I, I, well, I will ask the, the Acting Chair of Education, maybe there's some justification. But it just doesn't seem right that we're using bond money and then after X amount of years, uh, you know, I mean, the question also becomes what happens next time that there's gonna be an increase? I mean, we're gonna go out in the bond market again or can we finance it internally? Are we gonna be able to do that? What time, what happens next time there's gonna be an employee salary increment increase or, you know, payment? What are we gonna do then? Right? So it, it doesn't seem consistent that, I don't think that we're, that every time that comes up, that we're gonna go to the bond market and try to borrow that. And so at this point in time, I, I need to ask you before I make this amendment. I would like to make an amendment if there's no satisfactory answer.
Sure. Um, Senator One-Pat, would you yield to the question?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, part four, the, the four points at the beginning of the adequate education is to, uh, ensure that we have certified professionals, certified teachers, guidance counselors, uh, librarians, administrators. And, and one of the things that makes it very difficult, of course, for GPSS is, uh, to recruit, uh, teachers when our salaries, the salaries of our teachers, of course, are at the lowest compared to, uh, the national level. And also, the second thing would be the retention of these individuals. You know that right now, today, basically, does, they do not recruit teachers from, uh, other, uh, dot schools. They actually recruit their teachers on island from GPSS. And, and to this day, we still have a lot of vacancies because we still aren't able to recruit teachers at the salaries that is being offered. And legislation was passed to try to address that, to rec- recruit and retain our teachers. And it's an incremental, uh, basically increase in the sense that, so that we'll be able to get the teachers up to, uh, the national level. The other is that, uh, the, um, payables to our vendors. Right now, a lot of vendors don't even wanna deal with GPSS. And when they don't, Xerox and any other supplies and materials that they're gonna need, if they don't respond to the schools and sell to the schools or deliver any of those materials, then it's gonna be very difficult for GPSS to operate and definitely will not be able then to provide that adequate education, uh, for every child with all the supplies and materials needed. And then, of course, the vehicles is that the flatbed is used primarily to bring out all of those supplies to the schools, the, the equipment, the textbooks, you know, that, that would have to go out to all the thirty-eight schools. So, I mean, I understand exactly where you're coming from. I felt the exact same way. But when you really look at it, how one affects the other and ultimately, in the end, we will not be able then to, to be able to recruit and retain our teachers if we don't, uh, bring the salaries up to or close to the national level.
Um, Senator Espada, would you like to take a break and maybe we'll go to lunch and come back?
I would, I would like to take a break, only because, you know, I, I understand some of the explanation, but some of them just doesn't make sense. A RFP for meal reimbursement program comparable to Hawaii and Alaska? I mean, comparable to Hawaii and Alaska, we don't even know what that means. And, 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 you know, so I have real concerns of how we're gonna use thirty-five million dollars over thir- you know, and, and have to pay for it over thirty years when we should be doing that already. We're talking about a, a department that already takes up more than fifty percent, basically, of, of, of the total government budget. And yet now, we're gonna have to go out and borrow for salary increases. We're gonna have to go out and borrow for vehicles that basically are gonna be depreciated within the next three to five years. And we're gonna owe on it for the next thirty. Somehow, it doesn't make sense. So yes, I would like to take at least a, a little bit of recess and let's start it out.
We'll go ahead and take a break and then, uh, and we'll recognize you when we come back. And we'll come back from lunch at one-thirty, at which time we'll resume this discussion. We'll be in recess.
What I would like to do is I'd like to ask, since we do have, uh, the advisor from Bank of America to Getca concerning bonds, I'd like to ask her a question, if I may.
Go ahead, ask your question.
Uh, you know, on, we went through the, the use of the proceeds for the bonds, uh, and, uh, on Attachment B, under the thirty-five million dollars for the public school systems, uh, it's basically enumerated, uh, all the expenditures of where the thirty-five million dollars would go. As you look through all the items, uh, you know, all starting from the top, ADA compliance all the way down to the prior year's payables and management audit, I, I mean, if you go through the list, as a advisor to the government of Guam, would you recommend that we take out a bond? Or would you sanction that we take out a bond for operating expenses such as those listed on this Attachment B? I mean, in all true wisdom of, uh, and again, I don't purport to be a financial genius because I am not, right? So I turn to you and ask you, would, normally, you take out a bond to finance something like, uh, teachers', uh, reclassification, employee salary increments, an RFP for meal reimbursements program comparable to Hawaii and Alaska for teacher salary increases and, and the like. Would you make that recommendation to the government?
Um, normally, you would issue bonds. You're, I mean, if you think about it, you're issuing thirty-year bonds and you're paying interest for thirty years on this money. Um, the average life of the bonds is about twenty-one years. And normally, you would issue bonds to fund projects that at least have an average life that matches the debt. So, so no, I would not, you know, recommend on a normal basis that, um, that bonds be issued for thirty years to fund current year operating expenses.
Well, then can I ask you, from this list on Attachment B, which, which of these items would you say justifies a, a borrowing of the bond? I mean, I can see where maybe a general CIP of facility repair and replacements. Would you categorize that as something that would be bond-worthy?
Yeah, that sound, that sounds about right.
And recreational facility upgrades and replacements, perhaps? Maybe we're talking gymnasiums and playground equipment and basketball courts? Uh, physical infrastructure?
Right. Anything having to do with physical infrastructure probably has a long, long life.
But when you're talking water fountains, would you consider that having a long life?
Probably not, but.
How about vehicles? A van, a pickup, a forklift, a flatbed?
Probably not, but again, it's actual physical equipment as opposed to, you know, salary increases. So, you know, one could possibly justify it.
Okay. But how about in terms of best, best post, uh, uh, asbestos abatement and ADA compliance? You'd, you'd consider those as, uh, worthy of a bond, uh, issuance?
I mean, if, if, if you don't have the money to otherwise fund it and it's required to meet certain certifications, I guess, um, you know, it's, it's possible under the tax code to, to issue bonds for those purposes.
Okay. Well, then, uh, Mr. Chair, at this point in time, then I'd like to make an amendment. And I would like to amend Section K, uh, two to reflect the removal. I move to remove, uh, gosh, just about most everything, uh, on this Attachment B except for perhaps the, the CIP projects. Uh, in fact, I'll even enumerate which we probably could leave on. ADA compliance, again, I, I believe we need to, to shore up there if we don't have the funds to do it. Asbestos abatement, I'd like to leave that on. Um, general CIP, facility repair replacements, uh, and physical infrastructure. The CIP, if you numbered them, it would be number seven for the total amount of eight million nine hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred ninety. I believe that quite could stay in. And then the next, the only other item I can see that should be on here would be, uh, the physical infrastructure. Oh, excuse me, two others. Recreational facilities upgrade and replacement and then physical infrastructure. And that'd be, uh, if you numbered them, it'd be item ten and number item eleven. But all others, I believe, are operational costs that probably should be, should fall within the present operating budget anyway.
So, um, Senator, to, um, make sure I got the same thing that you do. You want to amend K two to strike on Attachment B, all items except ADA compliance.
Correct.
Asbestos abatement.
Correct.
General CIP.
Correct.
Which would be facility repair replacement.
Correct.
Recreational facility upgrade and replacement.
Correct.
And physical infrastructure.
Correct.
Are there any other items?
Uh, no, those, those are the ones I believe that probably could withstand the, withstand the scrutiny of a bond.
And then, um, I would ask you to go ahead and put that amendment in writing. And we do need to, um, Senator, to be technically correct, to, uh, make the correction on the figure in two to represent the, uh, numbers that you've, um, included. Um, I'll go ahead and entertain any, uh, discussion on the amendment. Senator Shimizu?
So basically, the, the listings that are here, they're all for operations. They're all, could have been in the regular budget.
Senator, are you posing a question or making a statement?
Well, I'm trying to see. We're going section by section. I don't know who would answer this question. So this is for operation. That's what I'm trying to find out. Who would yield to that question? If nobody would yield, then I would say, yes, we, this is for operation, uh, needs. Now, the other thing is the, uh, when we get down to the physical, with a P, infrastructure of, um, one million dollars, what, what is, what are the, uh, infrastructures that we're talking about? I mean, is it widely, uh, just at the discretion of the, uh, the, uh, GPSS?
Senator.
That's one million dollars, I mean.
Yes.
But, uh, is there a listing of that or?
Who are you, who are you posing the question to, Senator?
Anybody that can answer it. Nobody can answer it, then I guess, uh, that means it's just anything that for one million dollars, just give it over and then anything that somebody decides this is for physical infrastructure. You know, I mean, where is it? Is it going to schools? Is it gonna go to Central? Is it gonna go where? I really don't know. That's a million dollars, uh, that I see there. And, uh, I would assume that there'll be some sense of, uh, um, responsibility to enumerate that, you know, that.
Senator Calvo?
Just a point of order, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I know we're in Section One.
Correct.
And the, the only concern, I know we weren't too clear on the rules. We're right now talking about the disper- the dispersal of, of proceeds for a bond, for a bonded venture. But again, Section One starts out with, um, with again, A, B, authorizations, terms, valid appropriation, additional. And I'm just wondering if, um, we're, we seem to be in the latter portions of Section One.
That's correct.
Point of order is that should we not move in, 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 in the order of the, of also the particular subcomponents or sub, subsections of, of, of Section One?
We're following the same, uh, approach as we did in the earlier, uh, discussions on general revenues where Section One was a very exhaustive list and we allow for two rotations of questions. So if five minutes, uh, per, and this won't count against your time, Senator Shimizu. Um, the, uh, each individual senator will be given five minutes to ask questions on any number of the sub-items in Section One, which is the case here as well. So if there's any further questions on that, pose them now. If none, Senator Shimizu, you have the remainder of your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, um, came in and, um, I saw, uh, Senator Espada making amendments already. So now I hear Senator Calvo, we have not gone step by step?
No, that is not correct. We are on Section One, which includes K two. So the amendment is to Section One, K two.
Okay, so we just, we just went straight to K two, right?
No. Everything under Section One is subject to discussion. Five minutes per member to speak in the first round. It's two, um, uh, a second round, five minutes as well.
Okay, I, I can, I can agree with Senator Calvo that we, we go step by step rather than jumping at different, uh, you don't?
No, no.
So we can jump anywhere?
That's correct. So long as it's within Section One.
Oh, okay, okay. So, uh, the, the question then, like I said, the, a physical infrastructure of one million dollars that we don't know, uh, what we are, um, uh, are spending that one million dollars. You just put that one generic catch-all phrase of physical infrastructure. Call for one minute.
Okay, we'll take a one-minute recess. Give me the holders back in order. Senator One-Pat, you have the floor. Mr. Bages is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's. Wait, wait, no, no, no. I mean, uh, it's on the amendment that.
On, on the amendment, did you, Senator Shimizu, had you concluded your? Senator Shimizu?
Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome the superintendent. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, the reason why, uh, uh, I guess you were brought in because of, uh, my question in terms of like this one million dollars for, uh, physical infrastructure. I don't know if you're technically. I don't know if your technical staffs are here to be able to delineate that because that's a, that's just a very broad million-dollar, uh, uh, amount. But let me just lay the foundation if I, if I can. Mr. Superintendent, is it not true that, um, not all of your amendments has been released?
No, we're short for, uh, oh-seven fiscal year and we're short also for oh-six fiscal year.
And that total amount, uh, was, would be about like twenty-one million dollars that is owed to you in terms of, uh, what was budgeted and what should have been released? And is that what prompted, uh, uh, GPSS to also, you know, take a little bit more, um, uh, drastic or, or more assertive by, uh, saying that, the board saying that they may want to sue the, the main government to be able to get the money so that you can be able to carry out a lot of these things that's here already? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, and you know, and like I said, I, I, uh, the, the question that I had was the general word of physical with the P, infrastructure, and then we also have, um, uh, other areas of, um, of, uh, maintenance and upgrades, um, what is the, just maybe let me know, what is that one million dollars for?
Sir, we, I, I recall that we had consolidated the physical infrastructure with the, uh, general CIP category.
And, and your general CIP categories were what numbers are?
Well, those are, um, to, um, there's a, like, building of the canopies, um, uh, building of the walkways, those are the things that fall under the category in the CIP category. So the physical infrastructure is, uh, we had merged that, so I don't have the, uh, the current listing right now, but we had provided that listing initially.
So, so are you saying that the physical infrastructure for one million dollars is actually up in the general CIP?
Yes, sir.
So this may be, and, uh, this is, uh, can be deleted because it's already on the eight-point-nine million?
Yes, sir.
So, okay, so, uh, it's already in there, seeing that it's already in there, and, and that one million should be redacted out?
Yes.
Okay, so, it, seeing that the, um, the superintendent says that it, it's already in the eight-point-nine, I move that we, uh, delete the, uh, that one million because it's a redundant, uh, appropriation. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, actually, that is already, that's the subject for which we're discussing the amendment. Um, if you recall, the whole sections-
Okay, so then let me go further.
Actually, the, it is appropriate, I might stand correctly, because, um, Senator Spaldon's amendment looked to keep that in place. So it is appropriate. On the amendment to strike physical infrastructure because it's redundant with the previous section, which is general CIP? That's correct, and it is, it is appropriate because it wasn't discussed earlier.
Okay.
All right, on the amendment?
Right, it's just, thank you. The next thing, um, some of this other, uh, uh, the ADA compliance of close to five-point-two million dollars. Um, where, where is this, uh, would this be also a part of your general CIP?
Yes, sir.
So again, that's another five million dollars?
But these are, you know, more, more specific, like building of ramps, uh, renovation of bathrooms and, you know, those are the areas that are to, to address the, uh, ADA compliance.
Again, Mr. Superintendent, is that in the eight-point-nine million dollars?
Uh, not all of them, sir.
How much of that? Because the general CIP is almost nine million, and then we have another ADA, uh, uh, what's that, uh, facility and repair and replacement of an additional five million, two-hundred thousand?
If I recall, we had reduced the, uh, five million, uh, approximately down to four million dollars. However, you know, we're looking at, you know, the, uh, the entire fiscal year in, in, in a span of twelve months. Uh, we are looking at, you know, it's a very big project, conceivably, you know, part of that can be, uh, allocated for oh-six, oh-seve- oh-eight fiscal year. And then can be, there can be a subsequent appropriation because reasonably we expect, you know, part of that to be, uh, is spent during the fiscal year oh-seven.
Is some of this ADA compliance, you know, part of the, uh, request for, um, release of funds?
Um, no, it is not, it's, um, you know, it has always been our obligation for more than ten years ago since we had the, uh, you know, the master plan for the one public school system.
So you're saying that it's about, you, you've made an adjustment earlier, but that adjustment doesn't reflect that here by almost a one-point-two million dollars?
The only reason why we had adjusted that downward is because of the, uh, the reality of what we're saying that, uh, you know, to do bids and let out contracts, it's going to take some time, so, uh, you know, it is, we feel that it is our responsibility to look at our share of the, uh, portion of the budget that what we can reasonably do in a fiscal year, that's what we're looking at.
And, and what would that be amount that you, you think would be reasonable?
If I recall, sir, it's, uh, approximately four million dollars. I don't have my, uh, you know, the list that I had prepared earlier.
But the, the, the aggregate amount is about four million dollars?
Yes, sir.
And you would feel comfortable with four million dollars versus that of five million two-hundred and forty-two?
I think that four million dollars will allow us to, to do a whole lot more fiscal year eight.
Thank you.
And then if we need to request for more from the legislature, then we will do that.
Okay, a- again, amendment to amendment to, to, uh, um, what the superintendent feels he needs, um, and reduce the amount from, to four million dollars.
All right, your time has lapsed, I'll go ahead and entertain the amendment. The, and the amendment is to, um, reduce the sums in attachment B from five-point-two-four-two-one-seven-five to four million exactly? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct in accordance with the superintendent's, uh...
Understood, Senator Wapat, then Senator Pangolino, and then Senator Lohan, Senator Wapat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, um, as much as I, I like to support the amendment because I know the superintendent basically said that and I had that conversation with him, uh, and the list that everyone has, of course, is a, is half of what the original request was. And, and I'd just like to, to, to read from the original list so then you'll have an idea basically, uh, why that I had put up that dollar amount back again, the one million dollars.
Chair, can we have a copy of the original list?
Because what I have here is the physical, of course, is the physical structure of two million dollars, replacement of temporary buildings, one-point-four million, the warehouse facility repair. Uh, we have the installations of the restrooms, walkway canopy, handicap ramp with stairways, um, the retaining wall with concrete trench, uh, the drainage system, all these are part of the physical structure. And I know Mr. Lewis does, doesn't, didn't bring this copy with, with him, I can provide this copy, of course, to everybody. But in essence, when you really stop and think about this, for the longest time, even the time when I was a school principal, we've never fully addressed the ADA compliance, we've never been in compliance. And then for us to, to, uh, to start to cut that dollar amount, I thought that that's just one area we, we shouldn't be, be, uh, you know, dealing with. Now, I think this body's just gonna have to make this decision once and for all, Mr. Chairman. Is that if we're going to cut now GPSS, of course, then I think the very first thing we need to do is just repeal then that every child's entitled to an adequate education, because if we feel that they're not entitled to that because we want to cut now everything here because they're all tied in, then let's make that hard decision now and repeal it. Because what I've done here with Mr. Rages and I really am trying to make sure that this time we're really going to try to adhere to everything, if there's anyone here who's probably more critical of GPSS, it's myself. Because I've been there and I know what's there and what's been happening and what hasn't been funded for years. And the previous speakers demonstrated. And Mr. Rages have responded by saying that for the past two fiscal years, they haven't been getting their monies. And for, for the first time now, we're getting very close to try to give them an opportunity to start on a clean slate. Now granted, there may be some stuff here that may be considered operations. But those operations are part of the, uh, the fourteen points. And if we're not going to support that, those fourteen points, like I said, then by all means, do it now, otherwise we're setting up GPSS for failure.
Okay, on the amendment, Senator Pangolino?
I think what's apparent here is the general confusion we have with regards to the approach on this, Mr. Rages. Because you're telling me that you want the ability, that you're basing your request to comply with ADA on what you think you can spend in one fiscal year. And I think that makes sense when you're asking the legislature to come up from current revenues. But now that we're approaching supplying the financial resources to make these projects coming from borrowing, it doesn't make sense to borrow half of what you need to, uh, implement the projects needed for, um, for the, uh, meeting the ADA requirements. It really just doesn't make it, make sense to say that when we were asking from the general fund, we would only ask for this much. But if we're asking from a financing capital infrastructure perspective in terms of coming up with a different pot of money for capital improvement projects and capital infrastructure projects, that you're still gonna limit yourself to just asking for what you think is gonna come from the general fund or what you think you're gonna spend. I think the fact that we need to, uh, that we are going to borrow some money, we must take a look at what is it that we need in order to do that and not be limit ourselves to saying, we're only gonna ask for this much because this is what we think we can spend in one fiscal year. So, uh, I think that's all part of this convoluted thing of trying to fund things for current requirements from future borrowings and things like that, and it just adds to this entire confusion here. And, uh, I think that the, uh, you know, the one public school system trying to shortchange itself, um, to me is just completely baffling, I mean, I just, I ask señor, confundisse.
You're absolutely right, sir, it's needed. We need the five-point-two.
All right, uh, Senator Lohan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I'm confused in this as well because I'm looking at the original submission versus the amended submission. And, um, in regards to the need for five-point-two and then the amendment to, uh, the amendment to four million dollars. Uh, Mr. Rages, did, did you not, okay, you're saying that you, you need the five-point-two for compliance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, my confusion here is, is now ADA, the ADA compliance of five-point-two, that would get you up into complete compliance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but the confusion here is, is because in the original submission, okay? You have two other categories here that will give you, get you in compliance, and, and that's not under the ADA compliance. You have the elevator to be ADA compliant and that's four, four-hundred thousand. And then we have another subcategory here, handicap ramp with stairway and other CIP at five-hundred-ninety thousand. So if the five-point-two in the original, original submission gets you in full compliance, that excludes then your compliance, getting in compliance with the, with the elevator. Because it's not included in, in, in the original, I mean, I'm sorry, in the amended, amended version. Because there's, there's three categories here that have to deal with, with ADA. The ADA compliance, five-point-two, the handicap ramp and stairway, and also the elevator to be an ADA compliant. So you're, if the five-point-two that you need in the amended version is already, already has a shortfall of nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand based on the original submission?
Yes, sir, the original submission was to try to delineate, you know, the, what is strictly the, um, you know, the, uh, the building itself versus the elevator itself. So that is what we tried to delineate between the two.
Okay, so, so actually the five-point-two will, will, will not get you in complete ADA compliance?
Because we're, it's not including the, uh, you know, the elevators.
Okay, so, okay, so a- again, it will not get you in complete compliance then? This is minus, the five-point-two is minus the ramps, minus the elevator, right? So they need more than five-point-two? It's six-point-two, basically. You know, if, if we wanna get you in complete compliance, you know, the five-point-two will give you a shortfall. The, the, the four, the four million would definitely give you a shortfall. So if we wanna get you in complete compliance with ADA compliance, fully, it's, 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 it's a nine-hundred-and-ninety, ninety, a million-dollar shortfall. Anyway, I, I, I just wanna get clarification on that because the, the, you know, the understanding that, understand the, the chair of, uh, education wants to make sure that we don't cut, but again, from the original submission to the amended submission, there's already a cut. And then to do an additional cut. So you're cutting by almost two-point, two-point-two million dollars? Anyway, I, I just wanted that, that answered, thank you.
All right, there's been objections on the amendment, um, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, motion fails. We are still on main amendment, uh, with respect to striking all items, um, and that amendment has been amended to remove physical infrastructure as well, uh, reducing the total amount by one million dollars. So on the main amendment, Senator Guthertz, and then, I'm sorry, Senator Shimizu, you've already spoken on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, uh, two things, the first thing is I have a question to Mr. Rages, if I may ask, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Thank you. Mr. Rages, among the, uh, items in attachment B is, uh, monies needed for, uh, water fountains, hundred-fifty thousand dollars. And I know, uh, working and sanitary water fountains are one of the mandates of the every child's entitled to an adequate education. Now, a question has been asked here, and I, I'd like you to maybe clarify it. The department first does not have the monies to install new water fountains where needed, is that correct?
Yes.
And, uh, how big a problem is this in the schools, how many really are needed? Is it a large number?
Well, the, um, original estimate was that, uh, well, let me put it this way, we have already, um, committed, you know, to purchase thirty-eight water fountains from, uh, using, uh, USDA funds. Now, we still have an additional need of seventy more water fountains, uh, that is in compliance with the, uh, the ratio, the at least, the ratio is seventy-five to one for, uh, the water fountains.
So, in my understanding, and maybe Mr. Castro can help us, is that generally a water fountain is properly maintained, should last at least ten years, am I correct, Mr. Castro? Is that reasonable?
That's reasonable.
Okay, so, Ms. Chairman, the point I'm trying to make is...
Just a minute, Senator Guthertz, I realize we have sworn in the, um, the folks here from GPSS. Can we get the sergeant-at-arms to quickly, um, swear in our, our two gentlemen? Just raise your hand and, um, testify to the...
I do.
All right, Mr. Castro, I apologize, um, I forgot that you needed to be sworn in as well as Mr. Rages. But in answer to the gentlelady's question.
So these are cr- critical acquisitions to comply with every child's entitled and adequate education. And you do not have the funds to do this right now, your own money? Okay, Ms. Chairman, uh, I would like to make a motion after we dispose of this amendment, thank you.
All right, um, on the main amendment, Senator Wapat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I stand up, of course, in, uh, in opposition to the amendment and, uh, and primarily because, um, if you really look at the, the fourteen points. And we've made, of course, we've had major discussion in terms of how are we going to deal with it when October one comes up? And we basically passed an amendment to create- it when October one comes up and we basically passed an amendment to create an education in Buzman or Suruhano so that that would be the first point of contact before we actually go to court. And so, and by doing so again, you saw again an amendment, separate amendment, that was, uh, was accepted at the very beginning of the budget where we budgeted then for, uh, positions, certified professionals. But in order to retain them and in order to recruit those professionals, then we need to then pri- provide then, of course, you know, a salary that's comparable to the national level because we're competing with everybody in the United States because they have the same problem. And if we don't do that, then we're going to lose a lot of our teachers as well who end up in Dodeo because they are recruiting from our own teachers. I had a personal discussion with the superintendent there, Dr. Dieckmann, and he said he's very happy that he's not going to violent to recruit because he's recruiting right here. So why I feel that the, the increase, the teacher increases is, is part of this is because of the fact that we aren't able to recruit. Point number six, air conditioning. Now, I know we've given them money prior, uh, in the past two budgets, and they have been addressing all those. And if you look, they made it a, a, a reduction in the original request versus what it is now that they're requesting. There's a significant drop from millions to somewhat three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Running water, what do you think that is? Water fountains? We just took that out. So where are we going to have then water fountains for the childrens to drink from? I'm not saying cold water, it's just water fountains for the children to have adequate running water just for, for drinking and for, uh, toilets. You know very well that if, if we don't have water in the schools, what do we do? We shut down the schools. Point number eight, reliable electricity. Number seven, toilets that flush. Number ten, textbooks. Eleven, libraries. Twelve, environment conducive to learning. Thirteen, a hundred and eighty days of instruction. So if the kids are out for whatever reason, that means we have to extend the school day. And when we extend the school day, that's extra money that we're going to need to pay everyone in the school system. Number fourteen, busing. So, I mean, unless, of course, you know, you just feel that not, that whatever it is that we've just, you know, are willing to, to delete here, which are all part of providing adequate education for the children, then like I said earlier, then after we do this, I suggest, notwithstanding, you know, our House rules, you go back, we go back, or make a separate administrative amendment and repeal it. That's all I have to say, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is.
All right. On the main amendment, Senator Lohan, uh, was recognized. Uh, Senator Lohan, did you want to speak on the main amendment? All right. Um, Senator Espicio, and then, uh, Senator Espicio?
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, uh... Ms. Chairman, a thought just occurred to me, uh, and, uh, these items, um, listed here, which amount to about thirty-five million dollars, I think, uh, maybe most if not all of these are ballpark, uh, numbers. Uh, and if we're to include this specifically in K two, thirty-five million dollars to fund the capital expense items and capital improvement projects at GPSS pursuant to attachment B, we attach this item B to that, and, uh, the exercise that we just had ten minutes ago, which, which, uh, highlighted the fact that fiscal infrastructure, uh, one million dollars is already incorporated, uh, in another item, uh, how if this were to pass as is and all of these things were delineated in the bond indenture, would then the government of Guam, GPSS superintendent have the flexibility to move balances around or would we be bound by this attachment? Maybe since we have the, um, bond, bond people here in Getca?
Who, who do you want to answer your question?
Anybody, really. If, if we're going to be specific...
Um, I believe that you can reappropriate, um, in legislation, whether it's an amendment to the original legislation, um, I think that you can reappropriate projects. I don't know if the authority falls then enter onto GPSS to reappropriate those monies, but, um, if you were, you know, delineating certain projects in the bond indenture and in, you know, your official statement disclosure to the market, you probably want to then go back and just, you know, reauthorize, um, these substitute projects.
That would be a local decision. You, you, okay. Then I, my next question is for this, um, could you please explain, uh, what the RFP for meal reimbursement program comparable to Hawaii and Alaska? You have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar request.
Yes, we, for, we've been trying to get the, um, the meal reimbursement similar to Hawaii and Alaska because we have a larger reimbursing, reimbursement rate. However, we've not been able to do that. So we have to enter into an RFP so that we can, there's only one company in the States that's able to do that, but we have to go out with an RFP. But the RFP, we want to be able to make sure, because some companies are saying that they can do it, but we want to make sure that when they are going to do it, that they're not going to subcut track it out and, and go to a company that we can go ourselves. So that RFP, it's a, you know, it's an amount that's significant, but we can see a greater return for our school system.
And your consult, and your consultant will lobby Congress to make the amendment to include Guam?
We have been working very closely with, uh, the federal entities, and that's the only thing that's required of us, to go through an RFP to, um, do some kind of a study, you know, to match the reimbursement rate for Hawaii and Alaska.
And, and who required this study? Is this, isn't, isn't just congressional action required to extend Guam to be covered? Because this issue came up in past, uh, fiscal years, and, and I'm wondering if you approached , uh, Delegate Verdalio to seek her assistance?
I, the only recollection I had was that I, I was informed that they had made that approach, but there seems to be a procedure for us to follow also. So we're taking advantage of that opportunity that we've been advised on what to do.
And what is that procedure?
To, uh, enter an RFP with, uh, you know, there's only one company in the States that's, that deals something with regarding the meal reimbursement.
And what would the consultant do? What is the scope of service?
Um, I don't have the specifics, but you know, that's all I know, that we have to go into an RFP in order for that to be completed and then submitted. And then that's where the reconsideration for us will take place.
Isn't the issue that Guam is getting a lower rate, um, with the, with the meal lunch, school lunch reimbursement program because we're not part of the continent of the United States? In Alaska?
Not, I'm, I'm not too sure about that, but all I know is that we seem to be paying out more for each meal that is being prepared.
Because the reimbursement is less for Guam than it is in other jurisdictions?
Right, yeah.
And what is the, the entity that would provide that remedy? Is congressional action required or is it the U.S. Department of Education? Is it the U.S. Department of Interior?
We, um, we're not sure, but we, we're assuming that that's, uh, USDA, and, um, because I have met with several, um, federal, uh, federal officials regarding this matter, and this is all that they're suggesting go, we wanted to go sole source, but, you know, they...
I know, I'm just asking, Mr. Superintendent, is it necessary to have a, uh, con- consultant or lobbyist of two hundred and fifty thousand when we supposedly have a delegate who could, uh, uh, maybe pave the way for Guam's case, uh, in her federal, uh, federal interactions, interaction with federal officials?
Sir, I know that it was brought to the attention of the, uh, delegate's office, but how far we are, you know, regarding that approach, I have no idea.
So we're going to mortgage two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of Delegate Verdalio's inaction? Is that what we're attempting to do here?
No, sir, I'm not saying that. I'm simply saying that I know...
No, I'll say that, Mr. Superintendent, I'll say that. So my amendment to the amendment then would be to strike this item out. I don't believe we're prepared to make this kind of, uh, financial commitment to spread out over thirty years when it's not, um, clear what the delegate can do for us. If it's just a requiring congressional action or are we just going to take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, hire someone and not, by some stroke of luck, we may get it, we may not get it, but yet the people have spent this money?
Senator Shimizu, the amendment is already to strike that section, so you can't strike it again. The amendment would be out of order.
Oh, is that part of the original? Because I didn't see the amendment in writing, so that's what I...
Yeah, we're waiting for the amendment, too.
So I guess I argued, um, in favor of that particular item. Thank you.
That was addressing Senator Espicio.
Some, maybe Senator Shimizu and I are looking like twins these days because you're not the only one who...
Did I, did I betray you, Senator Shimizu? You know?
It's okay, I'm not offended because I responded.
Senator Shimizu is, uh, he, he's trying a second bag of the apple, so, uh, we're going to, uh, finish the first round, and if there's another round, we'll go ahead and go to you, all right? Senator Espicio, you stay on the floor.
All right. Thanks. I'm done.
All right. Senator Pangolino, on the amendment?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, Mr. Chairman, when you take a look at, uh, financing, um, it makes sense to delete these items, uh, and not spread the cost of these perishable, you might want to say, or, uh, uh, non-short lifespan, uh, items, uh, operational items over a thirty-year, twenty-year period, no matter what, uh, even beyond, you know, your current operating expenses. So while I don't dispute the fact that it doesn't make sense to finance some of this, what is absolutely clear is that we need to do these things and we need to finance them. So I just want to caution the body that if they delete this from the borrowing, and we got to go back to the budget and give whatever we delete here over to the Guam Public School System so they can do it, so they can do the projects, they can do water testing in the schools to make sure that their children are drinking safe, clean water. We can't just delete it here and say, "C'est la vie." You know? We need to test the water to ensure that the children are drinking clean and safe water. So we have to go back to the budget that we gave the Guam Public School System and put that amount, take it from somewhere else, and we're not going to borrow the money, which I don't, again, you know, from, from a financing point, it doesn't make sense to do that, but we've got to give them then the money from the general fund, from current year revenues to test the waters. We need to ensure that, uh, that they have adequate, uh, uh, vehicles, I guess, in order to perform the jobs that they're asked to do and so forth. Some of this can go, uh, you know, can, can be tweaked and so forth, but it's absolutely, uh, a must that if we delete these items, we've got to go back to the Guam Public School System budget and increase them so that they're able to do them and not sacrifice, you know, the, uh, the education of our children, the health, the welfare, and the safety, and of course, learning through the improvement of teachers for our children in public schools. And, and it's as simple as that. Uh, but we got to do one or the other. Uh, and from a financing standpoint, I agree with the, uh, mover of the amendment, you know? Let's not, let, I mean, let's not pay, you know, twenty years for a rat test that we decided to conduct today, and, and it's going to take us, uh, you know, twenty years to pay that off. But also, let's not do it, uh, because we don't have the money to do it, and, and this is how we were going to do it. So, uh, I, in that respect, uh, whatever the body does, I think we've got to do one or the other, we've got to put it back in the operation budget of the Guam Public School System.
All right. Um, are there any other speakers on the amendment? Senator Espada to close. All right, just, just to clarify, Senator Shimizu, you spoke as soon as we came back, uh, when the superintendent was asked to come, uh, for the body, so you were the first speaking, first person to speak on the amendment by Senator Espada, but I'll give you, uh, one more minute to go ahead and summarize your thoughts.
Okay, just the reason why, because I thought my good colleague here had made the motion to an amendment, and I was going to speak on that, you know, because that's why I thought I had another five minutes on that, you see, earlier, so, you know, I appreciate...
That amendment did not go because it was redundant amendment.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, so then I can't speak on that, you're right, if it had gone to...
It's already, yes, it's been ruled out of order.
Okay, thank you. But we can also speak on the, the whole amendment, right?
Again, I, I will give you, I'll give you one minute, if, uh, if there's no objections from the body.
I'll get thirty seconds.
Okay, thirty seconds.
You know, Mr. Chairman, basically, the, the, this is not in opposition, I just want to make sure that there's no redundancy, and, and that's why the good superintendent have pointed out certain things that's already been included in another area. I want to make sure that whatever, uh, we do put in for twenty years, uh, is truly something that, uh, is very crystal clear. You know, water and all of that, nobody objects to that, but I do object to, to putting in a million dollars for a very, uh, fuzzy concept and then only to find out that it's already in, in another wording which has to do with CIP, uh, Mr. Chairman. So yes, we, we need to look and scrutinize those, and I think the good mover, Senator Espada, is doing just that, to be able to, uh, identify. Thank you for your generosity for the time.
You're welcome.
Just before we vote on the amendment, can I ask what the pleasure of the House might be? Because, um, I, I pose, if I support, uh, the amendment, then I would also want to support increasing GPSS budget by fourteen point five million dollars, and then, and one has to follow the other. So I just, can we just take a...
You can move that, um, after we dispose of the section because we'll have, that will call for...
Yes, I just wanted to caution the body that the amendment would mean a reduction of fourteen point five million dollars, and then that's the oversight of education said right now, if we're not serious about this, and the other option may be to, uh, repeal the fourteen points to be more in line with what the legislature is willing to fund right now. So would we then be able to go back to GPS budget and increase the budget by an additional fourteen point five million?
That would have to be a motion entertained by the body, and so that motion is not yet before us.
Well, how would you rule, Mr. Chairman? Because one has to follow the other.
I would rule based on the votes on the floor.
Well, then you can't hold, you're holding my vote hostage, see?
Well, I can't, I can't anticipate an action with that has not been made on the floor. We rule on measure by measure. So we're effectively going through a second round of, um, uh, discussion on the same amendment, uh, right now, Senator Shimizu and then Senator Espicio. Senator Palacios is after you. But if there is a motion later to return to the previous section of the budget, that would have to be entertained, uh, as it's presented.
And you would entertain that? You would not rule that it's a re- motion to reconsider?
No, again, it would take a motion, notwithstanding the standing rules, because we're going to be on hold.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Senator Palacios, on the amendment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I rise and support the amendment. If the concern is that this government may not be able to comply with the fourteen points, uh, one idea is to appropriate, I mean, I guess to appropriate twenty million and, and reprioritize the fourteen points, and for those points for which the government cannot comply, we can extend maybe for six months or a year. Uh, I, I, I really believe that it's not, uh, all, all or nothing arrangement. With twenty million, there's so much can be accomplished, and so we can go back to the some points, uh, the, the, the less critical, uh, and extend that, not to exceed, say, not to exceed to a month, then that's how we can, but thirty-five million dollars, uh, uh, for, for operations and I, I was looking at the borrowing authority really as, as this government's ability, uh, will enable this government to pay a debt which will never go away. Uh, and on that basis, and I, 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 even the twenty million to me is, I, I, I hope that the Espada, uh, amendment at least would pass, and then we have to deal with the, with this section itself later on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If there are no further discussions, Senator Espada to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we've heard it. It doesn't make sense to go on the bond market, to borrow money over a thirty, twenty to thirty year span to pay for a lot of the items on attachment B for GPSS. It just doesn't make sense. Because in that sense, we're basically, uh, increasing the cost for these items by financing it that way. These, these items should be financed totally out of their operational budget. And I, for some reason, I mean, as much as I want to support GPSS and its mission, they too have to bear down and really look at the inefficiencies, where their inefficiencies are. Because if you're dealing with an over two hundred million dollar budget year after year after year, there's got to be money in there to fund a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for water fountains. It shouldn't be on a thirty-year bond market. You know, there's got to be allowances made or, or planning done so that you know that there's going to be some reclassification, there's going to be some salary increments that are coming, come down the pipeline. You don't go to the bond market for that, you plan internally. And when you start talking about vehicles, you don't go on the bond market, it's like taking out a mortgage on your house so you can go buy a car, right? It's, it's going to depreciate, it's going to be gone in five, five years. It doesn't make sense to go to the bond market to go buy a van, a pickup, a forklift, and a flatbed. And even then, you have to really question, do they really need a forklift? Do they really need a flatbed? Nobody's justified that to me yet. And so, you know, my, my amendment to take these items off, I think is well placed because it is not appropriate, it is not appropriate to go to the bond market, take money out over a thirty-year span, pay the interest, and then just have these items paid that way. So I hope my colleagues support this amendment. Thank you.
All right, there's been objection voiced, um, insofar as those in support, please raise your right hand. All right, motion fails. We are still on Section One, um, I, we are round two discussion on Section One. Senator Rispio? Okay, any other speakers on Section One, Senator?
No, just, just, just for a clar- point of clarification on the vote?
Yeah, it was, okay.
What was the vote?
It was six.
Are you sure?
Sure. Yep, if you want to, um, okay. Again, those, um, who are in favor of the amendment, I didn't see your hand, we'll do it again, raise your right hand, please. Again, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven votes failed. All right, on Section One. Okay, on Section Two. Senator Guthers? Okay, again, Section Two.
Section Two. Section Two.
All right, uh, again. On Section One. You're on Section One.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier, uh, in the original budget bill, there was a provision, uh, for the University of Guam for, uh, some CIP money. In the version that was revised, that Senator Calvo presented to us, the university was removed, uh, from any CIP money. The university's contacted me and has shared some, uh, needs, serious needs with me, and, uh, I've passed out a copy to all the senators of a document which I call Attachment C to my amendment, which includes, uh, capital improvement projects, capital outlay, and these are the priority projects that have been identified by the University of Community, the University of Guam Community for, uh, its needs. So I'm presenting to my colleagues, Mr. Chairman, a proposed amendment that would add a, uh, new number ten to Chapter Eight, Section One, Item K as follows. Two million dollars to fund University of Guam capital improvement projects and capital outlay as listed in Attachment C. These projects, if you look at them, are critical projects for the university and, uh, and the Guam community. For example, Project Number One, and these are listed in priority from the university. Project One deals specifically with the nursing and health science programs for renovations and expansion. The School of Nursing and Health Sciences is unable to accommodate new students wanting to major in nursing because they have a lack of facilities to meet the need. So this item is intended to take care of that serious problem. The second item, campus-wide structural building upgrades, deals with some structural problems, uh, currently occurring at the university that are quite serious. Item number three deals with air conditioning equipment for the University of Guam Lecture Hall and Computer Center, their air conditioning systems are not working properly and require remediation. They also have problems with ADA compliance, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, and they are requesting some funds to be able to meet those standards. Uh, and then it continues on, Mr. Chairman, five, six, seven, eight. The university has presented this in order of priority, and their total need is two million dollars. So that is basically the, uh, jux of the amendment that I am presenting at this time.
Okay. Senator Frank Blas Jr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm looking at this amendment here, and I'm wondering, um, where does the good senator proposing this amendment, uh, where's she gonna get it from?
These monies would be part of the bond.
So you're?
Okay, um, Senator Guthers, you yield to the question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, originally, I, the bond included monies for capital outlay for the university, but my understanding is that that was taken out from the first version we saw to the present version.
Senator Blas, did that answer your question?
So my, is my understanding then, Mr. Chair, uh, that this money, if I can go ahead and again, uh, ask a question of, of the, uh, author of this amendment, is that, uh, you're, you're proposing to increase the bond amount? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, uh, originally, I understand, it was supposed to be something like ninety million dollars, and then it went down to seventy-nine, is that correct, Mr. Chairman? That's my understanding, so this simply restores the university's request for capital outlay. Was in the original bond request.
Um, well, I'm, I'm reading Section One A, it looks at ninety million dollars. Senator Calvo, would you like to respond to the question?
Yes, Mr., Mr. Calvo, if you can help.
Well, actually, we'll, we'll ask Senator Blas then, and we'll come back to that. If you wanna add a point of information, you may. If not, Senator Blas?
Mr. Chair, can we take a one-minute recess?
Okay, we'll take a one-minute recess. Senator Blas Jr. had the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair, I wanna go back to, and with regards to my original question to the author of the amendment as to, uh, where she proposes to get the, uh, two million dollars.
Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I've, uh, informally discussed this matter with, uh, Senator Juan Pad and also Mr. Rages, and, uh, and Mr. Rages can reaffirm this, uh, that he, he believes there may be some redundancy in the categories dealing with, uh, uh, capital outlay and, uh, fiscal infrastructure in the monies that were requested for by the Guam Public School System. So I would suggest that, uh, in order to be reasonable and fair, that we assist the university perhaps by half of its request at this time, uh, so that it can at least fund the most critical capital projects, particularly the ADA compliance, the nursing program, the structural problems, and the air conditioning problems, uh, at the learning halls of the university. So I would like to amend my amendment.
We'll, we'll have to allow, um, Senator Blas to conclude with his, um, uh, questions. Senator Blas?
Uh, thank, actually, Mr. Chair, um, she's already answered my question with regards to what she wants to do, thank you very much.
All right. Any other speakers on the amendment? Senator Guthers, did you wanna amend your amendment now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to amend my amendment by simply stating that, uh, uh, we would fund the university's capital outlay in the amount of a million dollars from the, uh, redundancy fa- of monies originally allocated to the Guam Public School System.
I'm gonna allow you, uh, time to go ahead and draft your amendment so that we can, uh, get it before the body. Uh, we'll be in a recess until that's completed.
Round two on Section One.
Based on the notes that I have and my following, and as we've gone through round one, we are now on round two because, um, uh, people have indicated their desire to continue to discuss it beyond the five minutes of their original audit.
Well, just based on the rules of engagement, Mr. Chair, I, I, I'd like to state for the record that I believe we are still around one, because what we were supposed to engage with was anybody who had opened discussions, anything on Section One, no matter what section it was, we'd go back to round two and check the, uh, uh, the different sections, because there were specific, uh, uh, funding sources for each item. So if I'm wrong at that, um, I don't know, do I need, need to move for, I, 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 I need to, I, I need to know where we stand here and how you're gonna take this, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you, you, you can discuss, uh, Section One for five minutes for a single, um,
For any?
For the single round, and then we will go, and, and once all the members have an opportunity to discuss it, we will do round two, and it's my understanding that we were, we are in that round two at this point.
Mr. Chair, uh, there was no discuss, I, I did not get, I was not given the opportunity to speak on round one, and I had specifically asked for it, and that's why I'm checking.
Proceed.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, on subsection K, Section One, Item K, subsection five, three million dollars to fund solid waste landfill closure consent decree requirements for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Chair, at this time, I would like to, um, I guess yield to the Oversight Chair or anyone who can answer this, if I, if, if there is a specific breakdown for this three million dollars.
Do you want Senator Espada to yield?
No, I'd like the Oversight Chair to yield if he may. See, well, if I can have a breakdown of?
Are you directing this to Senator Espada? Are you directing?
I mean, I'm sorry, the, uh, um, Oversight, Oversight Chair on Finance.
Oh, Senator Calvo. Okay, um, we'll go ahead and, um, uh, take a one-minute, thirty-second recess, and we'll come right back, okay?
Thank you, ma- very much, Mr. Chair, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to look at the breakdown as submitted by the Department of Public Works. Mr. Chair, I do have an amendment to that based on the information received and working closely with my colleagues. Um, I know that it's being passed out right now, but if I may, Mr. Chair, if I can just read it? Um, it amends Section One, Item K five with the following. Three, five, three million dollars to fund the solid waste landfill closure consent decree requirements of the Department of Public Works, except that funds shall not only be used with the direct expenses related to the closure of Orde Dump consistent with Section Ninety-eight, Chapter Six of this act relative to the restrictions on the expenditures of public funds for the landfill. Again, Mr. Chair, just wanting to keep consistent with the previous amendments that were made that this body deliberated on for a very long time, and wanting to make sure that the funds will still be utilized in reference to the closure of the Orde Dump. So, um, um, I'd like to ask that my colleagues support that.
Senator Palacios?
Mr. Chairman, I object to that amendment. I, I don't know what, uh, what are those regulations and those things. I don't know what public work has to comply with. If it's already there, then it's already there. I object to the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any further discussion on the, um, amendment? All right, as many is in favor, um, of the amendment in lieu of the, in view of the objection that is, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, motion fails. All right, we are still on Section One. Senator Guthers? Senator Guthers, you're recognized?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just.
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment that's being prepared that will deal with Section One, uh, one moment, please.
By the way, Senator Guthers, just, um, FYI, uh, this is the second round, and you were recognized earlier, so I'll allow you to make the amendment, but then we'll move on to the next speaker.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I'm just gonna wait. Um, please get your reproduced copy out as soon as possible. We'll be in a brief recess. Read your amendment, please. We'll see if the language suffices, if, if you need the copy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Proceed.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll give you a copy, it's very simple. The amendment would be to amend Section One, Item K five with the following language. Everything stays the same, reading, "The balance of any remaining proceeds shall be used first to fund up to two million dollars for the Department of Law's oppesy system, and addition, any additional remaining proceeds shall then be used to fund the capital and operating expenses with Guam Memorial Hospital Authority," and this is the additional language, "after hospital authority and the University of Guam for capital improvement projects and capital outlay as listed in Attachment C."
So this is additive language at the end of Section Nine?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Restate the language?
The language is, "and the University of Guam for capital improvement projects and capital outlay as listed in Attachment C, and everyone has Attachment C."
Okay. Um, we'll go ahead and get the copy reproduced, and, and meantime, Senator Frank Blas Jr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to stand in objection to this amendment. Mr. Chair, uh, recognition that the, you know, the additional proceeds, main proceeds shall be used to fund the capital operating expenses at the Guam Memorial Hospital, you know, Mr. Chair, one of the things is, is, why, why I'm going to stand vehemently opposed to this amendment is our hospital is in dire need of, of capital for its, if, improvements in its infrastructure, as well as to continue to maintain the operating costs for the hospital. Every additional dollar that we take away, any additional dollar that we take away from the hospital, basically means that it could conceivably mean the loss of another life or another individual who would have to wait in the hallways on a gurney because of the lack of a bed. So with that, Mr. Chair, uh, I'm going to oppose this amendment. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. The copy is being disseminated at this time. Um, Senator Rispio?
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman. Are we talking about the amendment that would reduce the, um, three million to two million to fund the closing of Orde Dump? No?
I withdrew that amendment.
Then?
Yeah.
Where are you getting the money from?
That's item number nine.
Oh.
Item number nine, you just added another line.
Everybody should have a copy of the amendment at this time? All right.
Mr. Chairman, clarification, Mr. Chairman? On my copy, it said five, it should be nine.
That's why I thought, right? Yeah, for the body's, uh, reference, it's, um, nine, not five. All right, so on the amendment to revise or amend, um, Section One, Item K five, actually K nine, there's been objection raised, Senator Shimizu, do you wanna speak?
Yes.
All right.
Judy, Senator, uh, I mean, my good Senator, you know, quantiseppler? Quantiseppler, what is the leftovers that the hospital's gonna get? What is the, um, remaining, a few remained, a few balance? You know, we, we should take the, the healthcare system a little bit more, um, seriously, and you're not gonna be going around and say, eh, give me fund the leftover. What is the physical note with an F? What is the balance that we're talking about? With item nine? Would the good author, you know?
Senator Guthers, will you yield to the question?
Mr. Chairman, uh, if I could clarify from my perspective, I don't have the breakdowns of any monies that originally were, uh, thought of for this section before my amendment, but my amendment? But my amendment follows the hospital. It's not before the hospital. It follows the hospital.
Senator Shimizu?
Yeah, I agree, um, Mr. Chairman, but of course, um, the due diligence was done in terms of, um, breaking down what was, what is being requested in the bond to, uh, fund the other, um, um, things that the good Senator is asking for just now. But originally, this bond was to try to address Guam Memorial Hospital's, uh, shortfall of, uh, facilities. We have, um, bed space problems. We need to expand. We need to be able to do that, and in order to know that, we as legislature should look and see exactly just how much is sebla? Now, that's not the way we should look at the priority of healthcare. I, 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 I would, um, call for a recess and try to compute this, um, in terms of dollars and cents. You know, because the hospital is indeed in dire need of, um...
What's that, uh?
CIP improvements. We need to expand our, our bed capacities. We need to be able to expand our, our emergency room to upgrade it to a level of, um, support for trauma cases. We need to look in terms of, uh, coming up with, uh, an urgent care facility, which the cost of healthcare is less than it would be if people had to go to the emergency room. You know, we force our people to go where they can get the care after hours. But of course, we go to a high-cost item. From what I understood, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I understand that the copayment or what is being charged when you walk in on the emergency room, uh, for high, high fee, but for whatever it is, it's just a, a flat fee of eight hundred dollars. You know, the hospital is, is trying to put out, um, more fees to be able to recoup its costs. But I tell you what, we better start looking in terms of being a little bit more forthright and that's exactly what we want to do in, in, in giving to healthcare, the infrastructure for the healthcare, rather than just saying, oh, whatever's left over, na, ya, ni sebla. You know? We shouldn't be rationing these kinds of, uh, uh, support, 'cause I'll tell you what, you know, without your health, all the other things that you have to, to deal with is not as important. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Senator Pengelinen, and then we'll go to Senator Rispio. I said Rispio.
Thank you very much, uh, you know, Mr...
You're just hearing the end, oh.
It doesn't matter. There's no money for either one of them. I think that, uh, you know, the, the amendment, I mean, we, we all trying to find what the needs are and how to give them, and, and unfortunately, this is the, uh, worse than the patentio, I guess, you know? Do we, do we have any idea at all what the remaining balance is after the allocation from the proceeds of these bonds?
Senator, I should probably clarify the overall intent of the financing at this point. Um, originally, as you know, um, the authorization was to fund ninety million dollars worth of improvements, and we went back and, uh, discussed with Senator Calvo that the, the original intent of the, the bond issue was to, to refund the nineteen ninety-three bonds, um, and provide for debt service relief for the next three fiscal years, as well as issuing the amount that we can...
If I could just interrupt you. Provide debt service relief for the next three fiscal years?
Right.
It means we're not gonna pay our debt for the next fiscal year?
No.
Three years, and we're gonna put it at the end?
No, it means we, we are going to refund those bonds, whatever savings we have, we, we're able to obtain from restructuring that debt service?
Right.
Over the next thirty years?
By stretching, stretching it out.
Correct. Will provide us with about three million dollars for the next fiscal, three fiscal years in debt service savings.
So we're gonna save three million dollars over the next three fiscal years? How many more millions of dollars and how many more years are we gonna pay? Beyond the current debt of the bond, beyond the current bond? If we were to, what's the term of the current bond?
The, uh, the current bonds mature in two thousand nineteen.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, so for the next three years, if we refund, the new bonds will mature when?
Two thousand thirty-seven.
Aye, aye, aye.
That is, that is adding, that is adding seventy-seven million dollars.
I understand. We're gonna restructure our debt, save three million dollars for the next three years, and then pay another seventeen, eighteen years?
Correct.
On the debt. Okay, that's enough for me.
From a, from a budgetary standpoint, um, the existing debt service is approximately twelve point seven million on the nineteen ninety-three bonds. What we're trying to do is issue seventy-seven million, or whatever the amount is, that we can get according to current market conditions and not raise that, uh, annual debt service amount.
Hey, why don't we just float the bonds to twenty fifty and just pay like a million a year? That would work, right? It could.
Uh, I, I don't know that the market would accept a fifty-year bond, but...
But, but that's really all, all we're trying to do here. I mean, that's, that's...
We are stretching the obligation out as well as adding additional seventy-seven million.
Another seventeen years, basically.
Correct.
Okay, that's almost two generations, I think, when you look, look at it, so... Uh, but, but we don't know from the pricing of what the residual, after the allocation for everything above eight, we don't know what that residual, uh, proceeds would be, uh, that we're all fighting over now.
Right, that's correct, and it could be, it could be less.
It could be one million, it could be two, it could be four.
Correct.
Depends on the final pricing.
Yes.
Okay, so we really have no idea?
No.
Okay, so either these are the last priorities that we have, uh, because there, that's the leftover we're gonna get, or else we just reprioritize, and that's, that's not for, I mean, that's for us to decide.
That's, that's, yeah, that's the way it's, it's written out in the, in the amendment.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Senator Rispio, Rispio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, or Ali, it could be zero, right?
Right.
Because, uh, earlier, uh, when I added everything up, including this two million dollars for the Department of Law, now it's the Office of the Attorney General, their computer system, two million dollars there would bring us up to seventy-nine million dollars worth of appropriations against the anticipated proceeds.
Correct.
But the, but the panel keeps talking about seventy-seven million dollars worth of proceeds.
Uh, we've run numbers, and according to current market conditions, um, we're able to issue approximately seventy-seven in new money without going over the annual debt service amount every year.
So we were to follow your numbers, and that's basically why you're here, and that's why you're retained by the government of Guam to provide those kinds of financial, uh, expertise. It appears that this, um, substitute version offered by, uh, Chairman Calvo purportedly is two million dollars shortfall, not including the monies that the hospital here thinks are gonna get, the good chairman for the hospital, as well as the, uh, University of Guam that, um, Senator Guthers is always looking for. There's really no money for the item nine at all?
Um, as...
Supposed theoretically.
Yeah, as I understand it, the number nine reads that the balance of any remaining proceeds shall be used first to fund the two million dollars, so if there's no remaining proceeds, um, in addition to the seventy-seven million, then the two million dollars would not get...
See, now, I, I appreciate that comment. I think it's, uh, high time that this legislature, uh, say what we say and, 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 and really, uh, do what we really should be doing, um, here, Mr. Chairman. We're continuing to set these agencies up for failure. If we're going to pass this bill and make public pronouncements that we found two million dollars for the Office of the Attorney General, and that there's money for the hospital, there's money for the University of Guam. I remember in the current fiscal year, oh, seven, there was, uh, public pronouncements being made that there was thirty-three million dollars for the Guam Public School System. Absolutely set that en- entity up for failure, and then told the administration that there's eight million dollars in savings that's gonna recur, occur from the, uh, refinancing of some bond, so that was appropriated against, along with twenty-five million dollars worth of lapses. Already, the administration was, um, shorted thirty-three million dollars, uh, in that area, so I, I think we really should consider whether or not we wanna have a two million dollar set aside here for the Department of Law, really should read the Office of the Attorney General, and then make the poor Attorney General believe that she's gonna get two million dollars for her APA SI program, and then when she doesn't get it, say, oh, it's the administration. The administration, folks, my friends, the administration didn't provide that two million dollars. And that's what I'm trying to do here, Mr. Chairman, is to, um, facilitate a process that's purely objective, uh, realistic, and does not set any of our agencies up for failure, so uh, I, I think if the, the Guthers amendment fails, the next amendment to be in order would be just to delete item nines, but we'll take it one amendment at a time. There's no money.
Okay, thank you, Senator Calvo.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, I've been listening to some of the, um, statements made by the earlier senators in regards to, again, the refinancing of the nineteen ninety-three bond. Uh, this is something that is not, uh, come out of the blue. In fact, uh, much of I'm stating, what has been stated by Ali, um, has been known since, again, twenty-eight dash one four nine. Uh, obviously, when you're talk- talking about a refinance of a, of an, uh, of, of, of a certain debt, you're, you, when, in order to refinance, there's certain reasons why you do it. It's either if you have more favorable debt ser- uh, uh, um, debt service payments, uh, or you ha- you, you have the need for additional capital, but you have, but with this additional capital, trying to keep your debt service requirements at a, at a fairly even keel, or as in particular, to this case, your annual appropriations, uh, for debt service, um, no greater than what you were paying in the first place. Uh, but obviously, when you stretch out the term of loan, there's more to pay. And that's why this is up to the body, because there is seventy-seven million dollars worth of revenues or monies you get now, or whenever we, in one month, when this thing goes to the market. It may be seventy-nine, it may be eighty-eight, who knows? We don't know what's gonna happen in a month. But that is the first statement. I wanted also maybe correct, um, the sen- the earlier senator on the language. Maybe I better do it in Fino English, because, um, obviously, it's very clear, when we made this substitution, the language changes, so I'm sure the good senator read the original bill, and then, of course, this. Obviously, in the breakdown, in one, from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, it's the same language. So-and-so amount of dollars to fund payments two. So-and-so amount of dollars to fund past due. So-and-so money dollars to fund this. So-and-so money fol- dollars to fund that. One difference in nine. In nine, "The balance of any remaining proceeds shall be first used to fund up to two million dollars." I stated to you, to the members of the body publicly, at seventy-seven million. Obviously, when priorities, and this is one discussions with some senators, they wanted to set certain priorities. And that is where the number nine, the two million dollars comes, that if there is to be an additional proceeds when this thing goes to market, that if there is to be, then the first priority shall be for the aposty system. And then, of course, some language was also added, because the health chairman also believed we needed to fund the hospital. And that is where then he says, "Any additional remaining proceeds shall then be used to fund the capital and operating expenses of the Guam Memorial Hospital." So there was no, no pronouncement made of money that, uh, will be given to you, uh, but really, it's just all fictitious and a mirage. It was very clear, that's why we made the substitution, uh, the other day, from the original bill and now. And that's why, when there has been ongoing discussions for the past couple of days, if the earlier senator had listened to what I was sta- mentioning, uh, that there was no mis- misguided, uh, promise. Uh, obviously, folks, we don't know the future. Next month, if this thing is passed into law, next month, we may get nine, we may get seventy-seven, we may not, we may get eighty, we may get ninety. But based on the information that was provided over the past three or four days, when we had our financial advisors come in from New York, unfortunately, we weren't, uh, able to allow them to speak. Some of our senators had problems with that. But, again, that's how things happen. So again, we've been very clear, there is no, um, there's no way, uh, an attempt to deceive here, 'cause sometimes folks gotta listen. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, on the amendment. Okay, there's been objection raised, um, um, with the amendment, so all those in favor, please raise your right hand. On the amendment, those in favor, raise your hand. All right, sorry, motion fails. We are on Section One. Those who have not spoken. You've already spoken, Senator Guthers. Senator Pengelinen?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm just going to, uh, make a couple amendments, but I also wanted to ask a couple of questions. In, um, subsection B, under terms and conditions, determined by certificate or indenture. Uh, the statement here is that, um, that "The annual debt service on the bonds authorized in this section for a given year shall not exceed the aggregate debt service of said bonds for the previous year or the next succeeding year by more than one percent. Provided, however, that no requirement of payment of bonds authorized pursuant to this section shall be required during the first two years after the issuance thereof." So in other words, we're only going to pay interest only in the first two years, and there'll be no reduction on principal. Uh, is that correct? Is that my reading of it?
I believe that's what, the way it reads.
Okay. Does anybody know up there what this adds to the cost of the bonds by not reducing any principal amount in the first two years? To the cost of the total, uh, issuance, either interest or... And, and for what, for what reason are we paying only interest in the first two years and no, uh, principal reduction?
I can probably answer the first question in a minute. Uh, I don't know that I can answer the second question.
Okay.
Just, I mean, um, I think maybe we might have to ask, um, Senator Calvo's office what the intent was.
Yeah, I don't understand.
I, I mean, I can guess that it's a budgetary thing, but...
I think Senator Calvo wrote this section. Senator Calvo's committee wrote this section? No, it, no, uh, no, no inter- no principal payment in the first year? Oh, okay. So, um... Well, I have that question. I wanna know, just so, you know, so I can judge this thing a little bit more carefully. What would be the, what would be the, what is the additional cost by not paying interest in the first two years? I mean, not paying any principal?
So, um, I'm gonna call recess, uh, so they can calculate that, and we'll come back at that point, okay? We'll be in recess.
Into consideration, number one, Mr. Dirks, uh, had some issues, uh, and not, not issues, but obviously, there was the, the governor's, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar, uh, borrowing initiative, and that borrowing initiative, uh, initiative, quite coincidentally, is nearly identical to the initiative that was introduced, uh, Senator, by Senator Shimizu, quite coincidentally. And, and with that, some of this language, uh, was meant to be, trying to keep it as apples-to-apples as possible, and giving more liberal, uh, libe, uh, allowing the, 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 the ability for more liberal use or flexibility when it comes into borrowing. There could be a possibility that you might have not only the, the refinancing of the ninety-three bond occur, but also, uh, the possibility of the passage of even the two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar initiative. So obviously, with the language on the interest only, it's, it would allow the flexibility, uh, once we've moved along from the ratification on this budget bill, or, uh, if some other bill came about, such as a two-hundred-and-fifty-million, that allow for some flexibility in lower debt service savings, uh, uh, or lower debt service for the first two years. Obviously, if we were to do only interest only, eh, and that was how we were to go, and only that, then there'll probably be, if we, if we pass this as is, without a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar borrowing initiative, then there will be savings... borrowing initiative, then there will be savings, and as to how much that savings will be, obviously, it would allow us later on in the year to have some, we would have additional appropriation authority, because there would be some debt service savings. It wouldn't be flat 12.6 million, but if you calculated interest only for the first two years, there would be some savings to be used for appropriation authority later on. I hope that kind of helps a little bit in the explanation, Senator.
All right. We're waiting for Ms. Limtia to complete her calculations. Senator Pangolinan?
Yes, thank you. And, yeah, it's still, you know, for me, I think that's kind of a convoluted explanation for my purposes. I just asked, what's the philosophical approach to that? And if the philosophical approach is, we want to leave ourselves open for another $250 million bond, you know, then I just don't understand that. The other, there are some other provisions in here, for example, that I still have some questions on, and I'm sure that, are you ready with the answer?
Yeah, the amount of interest in the first two fiscal years is approximately 17.8 million. The way that, you know, I'll go back to the way that this bond issue was intended to be structured, was to maximize the amount of bond proceeds to the government while staying within the existing debt service from a budgetary standpoint. So we're able to move principal around, and for fiscal year 2011 onward, keep the amount of debt service on an annual basis the same as the existing debt service on the 1993 bonds, which is about 12.7 million.
Up to when? Up to 2019?
Uh, no, up to 2037. In doing that, you're able to get some relief in the first three years of approximately 3 million, as I stated earlier.
Right.
So, I'm, sorry? Correct.
Yeah. So had we funded the principal and interest in the first two years, or a principal payment in the first two years, what would be the savings, total savings, that we would realize?
It would be probably close to the 17 million number, you know, along the way or on the back end. So, you know, if the intention is to fill debt service to the amount that, you know, on the existing bonds, which is the 12.7 million, then you can fund principal to that extent in the first three fiscal years and not have that $3 million worth of, you know, debt service relief. And the differential will come, you know, over time or on the back end. Just, if you're thinking, if you think of it as filling the debt service along the 30-year amortization.
Right.
You can fill it on the front end, if you want, up to the 12.7 million, if that's the intention. My point is, you don't have to do the interest only.
That's my understanding. And if we did not do interest only, what would be the difference in cost from both the payment of the principal and not having to pay that principal payment over the first two years, not having to then stretch the amortization of that over the 30-year period?
I'll probably have, I'm sorry? His way. Correct. Yes. I'll have to run some numbers, because it takes into consideration the amortization over the life of the bonds, but I can get you that answer.
Yeah, I understand. I'm asking the question to just illustrate the fact that, you know, what we're trying to do here, in terms of, we're going to refinance this bond, we're going to get more money, we're going to decrease, ensure that we don't increase our costs, and so forth, and all we're doing is really adding costs at the back end.
Correct.
You know? So we want to take it easy on ourselves, and we'll let our kids worry about, and this is the part where, again, you can, and we'll let our kids worry about, you know, the debt service and the payment and so forth. We're not going to tighten our belt, and, you know, we're not going to tighten our belt, period. And we'll just let our belt out a notch, so that it just looks a little, it looks the same, but we've granted ourselves some relief, and we'll let our kids worry about it at the end. And I think that that's the philosophy that we're approaching with this, and that's the philosophy I have a problem with. Thank you. And the other, you know, I kind of tried to look at the prioritizations that have been given in this, and, you know, the thing that bothers me is, the governor has been able to find almost more than $10 million in these really hard times over the last few years, last two to three years. The governor's been able to find over $10 million to fund his consent decree. And I say it's his consent decree, because the people of Guam never agreed to that. This legislative body never agreed to this consent decree on the ordot dump. We could have figured out a way to resolve that matter. He just decided that he was going to commit the government of Guam to this consent decree to ensure that we keep paying and never ask for an appropriation from this legislative body. And when he's run out of tricks in terms of trying to find and grab money from everywhere else, he now wants us to come and borrow money and give it to him from this, you know? And I say, if the governor wants to fund his consent decree, he can continue to be just as creative as he was over the last two years, in which he found $10 million to pay for his consent decree. And I say, if we're going to borrow money under action 5 to fund a consent decree, I say that the fact that we had patients at GMH sitting in the hallway waiting for rooms, that they, that this body has looked for money and have given support as much as we can, but the governor's never decided that he's going to get creative and give GMH any more relief. He's given them some money from some of the compact impact and so forth, but it's obviously not enough. Yet, he continues to want to grab money to pay for his consent decree on the ordot dump. And I, that's not my, it's not the most priority right now in my book, and I'm going to rely on the governor's creativity to continue to find money from all the recesses of this government's funds and so forth. And I say that we take this $3 million identified here for the solid wasteland consent decree, and let's just give it to GMH. Let us just take that line out from number 9, where it says, "Shall then be used to fund the capital and operating expenses of Guam Memorial Hospital." Put that line in number 5, and say, "$3 million to fund the operating capital and operating expense of the government of the Guam Memorial Hospital," and take out everything regards to the solid wasteland field closure consent decree. Because I have confidence the governor will find the money, because he's found over $10 million over the last two years for this, and let him continue to be creative in that respect, but let this body continue to make its commitment to GMH, and say, "If we're going to do this, then let's do it." And that would be to amend line 5.
I get it. So the amended language is to strike solid wasteland field all the way to the end?
That's correct.
And replace it with capital and operating expenses of the Guam Memorial Hospital?
Correct.
All right.
And strike that from number 9.
Understood. On the amendment, Senator Espada.
I appreciate the good senator from Baragada's sentiments in terms of what needs to happen at GMH. I mean, GMH definitely needs assistance, and we definitely need to figure out ways to get money that way. However, I think we're all aware of the dilemma before us when it comes to solid waste. I mean, we are at the max. We are, you know, again, the report has come out from DPW that we're at that, you know, that 200-day level. We're going to need funds to close this dump. We're going to need it, so we can't just take it off and, you know, and say, let the governor find it. I think we're going to be, we have to be part of the solution as well. So I would have to object on those terms, that this is sorely needed for the closure of the ordot dump. Thank you.
Senator Espacio, on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I absolutely rise in support of the amendment, and I believe that that $3 million could be better spent to the Guam Memorial Hospital, because it's specific to capital and operating expenses for GMH. We know that if you go there right now, you'd be very lucky to be able to have available bed in the ICU or in any room of the hospital for that matter. You know, and looking at what the DPW is proposing to spend from this $3 million, originally it was 4.1 million. If you take out the 1 million, which I understand has already been omitted for the permanent groundwater monitoring for Lejeune, the balance of 3 million, you're looking at 15,000 landfill gas monitoring for an ordot dump. Couldn't that 15,000 be found from DPW's operating budget? Half a million dollars for technical advisor for the consent decree projects? Do we want to finance that over the life of this refinancing? $5,000 for a website maintenance, hosting, 15,000 for copying services? How can you equate copying services to saving a life? I think it's a no-brainer that we would want this money to be better spent at GMH as opposed to having a website. $500 for postage and mailing, media releases and bid advertisement, 20,000 digital camera, 10 megapixels, $500. We're going to finance a huge and exorbitant amount of money for DPW, $3 million, so part of which we can finance 10 digital cameras. We're going to finance $1,500 for filing cabinets, shelves, a digital recorder. You know, we spent the whole day almost going over GPS's budget, and I supported the amendment that was offered by our good friend from Timuning, I believe, and the Oversight Chair of Public Works. His arguments hold true now, as they held true the whole day, where we shouldn't be borrowing for operations. And I think that a lot of the money that DPW is requesting for is involving operations, and I stand in support of taking this money instead and giving it to GMH. And I think more than anything, they would use that money to possibly construct an entire wing at the Guam Memorial Hospital. So that, in and of itself, is going to be a capital improvement project. So I commend the speaker from Baragada, and I want to rise in full support of that amendment.
All right. On the amendment, Senator Guthers.
Mr. Chairman, earlier, as you know, if you look at the paperwork, I had submitted a amendment from this section on the ordot consent decree. And before I had a chance to discuss it, I was told that all of that money is committed, and it cannot be touched. So I did not pursue that amendment. I would like to make an amendment to the amendment that's being offered. I have no problem, Mr. Chairman, directing some of that money to Guam Memorial Hospital. I think it's very justified. However, I would like to direct some of those funds to the University of Guam for their capital needs. So my amendment would be to Senator Pangolinan's amendment. Am I in order, Mr. Chairman? All right. Thank you very much. It's the same section as Senator Pangolinan. If I can find it here. Sorry. Number 5. My amendment, Mr. Chairman, would be to add a very simple line to Senator Pangolinan's language, and $1 million to the University of Guam for capital improvements and upgrades.
Senator Guthers, is a $3 million figure at the front end?
I would like to amend it to 2 million.
All right. On the amendment by Senator Guthers, to reduce the $3 million to Guam Memorial Hospital, and to insert $1 million for the university capital improvements. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I can appreciate the passion that the previous speaker has with regards to proffering the amendment to the amendment. And, but you know, Mr. Chairman, just to make it short, sweet, and simple, I'm going to have to oppose that amendment to the amendment. Thank you.
Any other speakers on the amendment? If there are none, is the amendment to the amendment? Correct. No, it is not. So the amendment is to reduce the $2 million appropriation to the operations and capital at Guam Memorial Hospital, and to add $1 million appropriation to the university for capital improvement?
Senator Espacio is typing it for me.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I speak on my amendment, Mr. Chairman?
If you want to close on your amendment, you may. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Oh, do you want to speak on the amendment, Senator Shimizu? Okay, we'll take a brief recess while the amendments are being passed out. The whole is back in order. Senator Guthers, on your amendment to the amendment. Senator Guthers?
Mr. Chairman?
You need to withdraw your original amendment.
Yes, I want to withdraw my original amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Is there objection? Objection? So move.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you object over the draw of amendment? That's the, withdraw the amendment. All right. I'm hoping I'm speaking clearly. All right.
Thank you.
Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and after consultation with the chairman of the Health Committee, I'd like to offer this amendment. Again, this would replace section 1, item K5, with the following language. This is still inclusive of Senator Pangolinan's language. $2,640,000 to fund capital improvement projects of the Guam Memorial Hospital, and $360,000 for the University of Guam to fund the nursing, health science renovations and expansion. Miss Chairman, this money is number one on the university's priority list for capital improvements, and this would allow the university to open its enrollment in the nursing program to receive more students. Right now, they're not able to receive more students, because they don't have the space to accommodate them. And there's a great demand for nursing, and the hospital needs nurses. Thank you.
Senator Shimizu.
Mr. Chairman, I rise in support of this amendment, ostensibly because of the fact that we need to be able to have the kind of infrastructure and the environment upon which we can start producing more nurses here. And I do not want, in any way, fashion or form, to deny this amendment, although the earlier was quite expansive. You know, the needs are great and the resources are limited. This amendment, I want to thank my good colleague, and I'm sure the University of Guam, especially in the nursing and health science, would be very, very appreciative of our efforts. She persevered, she keeps on plugging, and keeps, basically what it does is that, while we want to fund everything, and we need to prioritize, we need to be able to look, what, given the amount of monies that we have, which one do we get? The bang for the dollar that we have. And anytime that it has the bang, that it will produce human resources, human resources, more teachers to be on the production line, more nurses on the production line, more counselors in the production line, and so forth. I stand ready to support it. And what I would like to do is to put here that the University of Guam shall provide the legislature, this is an amendment, and I can call for a one-minute recess to write it out, but ostensibly is to be able to give an account of the expenditure of the $360,000 that we have here, so that we can start knowing whether, what is going to be the full amount. So if I can take a one-minute... So if I can take a one-minute break, my amendment will be to have a report from the University of Guam on how this money was expended at the end of the fiscal year.
Senator Shimizu, I'm sorry, but that would be out of order at this point.
Thank you. Just, I'll do my best. At what point in time would I be in order?
Well, let's dispose of the amendment and the main amendment and then you can go ahead and tie any reporting requirements to anything you want as a separate amendment, okay?
Oh, I thank you very much. As long as I'll be able to do it.
We have Senator Blas now, Senator Blas. Did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, I can appreciate and if you can, just basically empathize with the position that I'm being put in here with regards to the amount of money, funds that would be taken out of the capital improvement projects for the hospital, recognizing the concerns and the issues that were brought forth by the previous speaker with regards to the need for the human resource. I'm still hard-pressed here and I want to continue to listen to the discussions of my colleagues before I can make my decision right now. Thank you.
All right, any other speakers on the amendment? Senator Espisho?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I rise in support of this amendment and I wish that the other allocation of this proceeds, should it go through, be taken, be written after this amendment to Section Five. What this does is it gives money for GMH for their capital improvement projects as well as recognizes the highest priority from the University of Guam's list of capital improvement projects. And that's the renovation of the nursing, health, science, renovation, expansion of that program. You know, these two programs go hand in hand. And this amendment recognizes that of all the allocations so far, it failed to recognize two other critical areas in need of some financial resources. That's the hospital and that's the University of Guam's nursing and health science building. So I rise in support of this. I want to commend both Senator from Baragada for recognizing the need that the hospital has. And equally important, I want to commend the Senator from Mingilau, who continues to always look after the University of Guam. She has a disclosure that she does not have any special interests. And I tease her over and over that the University of Guam is her only special interest and that's because it's her passion. She spent more than thirty years there and rightfully so. If she says that the University of Guam needs three hundred sixty thousand dollars to fund the nursing, health, science renovation expansion effort, I'm not gonna stand in the way of that, Ms. Chairman. I'm gonna support this and I hope our colleagues do as well.
All right, on the amendment, Senator Panglinen? Okay, are there any objections? There objection? There's an objection. Okay, we're gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. This is the amendment to the amendment for the three hundred sixty thousand bucks. Okay, again, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, motion carries. No, I said eight, motion carries. All right, on the main amendment, Senator Panglinen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, I feel comfortable making this amendment. I know we, you know, and really, my sense of comfort has come from the governor's determination to find money to fund the consent decree over the last two years. Ten million dollars in a time we've been struggling for everything, over twelve million dollars as of today, and he's been able to find that. And I think that, you know, with that kind of commitment, he'll be able to continue to find money for the consent decree while this body finds money for GMH. Thank you.
All right, on the main amendment, without objection? There is an objection. As many of you is in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Senator Panglinen?
Yes, just a couple of questions once again. The authorization for credit enhancement, do we have an idea how much that's gonna cost us? I mean, this is almost assuredly will require credit enhancement?
No, we are not anticipating that this will require credit enhancement. It's just an authorization that if the time comes when we go to market, if there is an economic benefit to credit enhancement and if we're able to obtain it, then we will be authorized to do so.
Is there any guidelines at all for what would govern whether or not we're gonna use, Kevin? Or is that just your judgment?
Generally, you look at the cost of the credit enhancement as compared to the economic benefit of insuring the bonds.
Yeah, the one thing though, I want to, I want to, if you don't have any guidelines for us, the guidelines I have for you is that the credit enhancement will, of course, be amortized, will be capitalized, basically, correct?
On an annual basis as opposed to upfront or is it...
Well, I mean, it's gonna come from the proceeds.
Correct.
Right, so the credit enhancement is gonna come from the proceeds. We have to pay back the proceeds. So therefore, we're gonna pay interest on the credit enhancement costs. Right, and so the guideline should make sure that that's all figured into it. You know, that we don't just take the first three years and...
No, that the analysis takes into consideration the full life of the bond and the cost of amortized over the life of the bond, including interest, so.
All right. Well, if we were, what would you anticipate a possible cause? Have we, when was the last time Guam issued a bond in the last ten years? If we have, I don't even remember, we have, without credit enhancement, out of the general fund?
I don't believe the ninety-five bonds were...
No, I think...
I don't believe the ninety-five bonds were insured. So those were the last general obligation bonds issued.
The, one question, you know, the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund have, when the ninety-three bonds were floating, the reason why we did not pledge the revenues of the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund was of the debt coverage ratio. At that time, the debt service on the ninety-three bonds was, I believe, somewhere near nine or ten million dollars from the general fund side. Then the University of Guam contributed a portion of that, about two million dollars. So we did not pledge the funds because the total collections in the real estate taxes, which is what the source of the funding for the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund at that time, was about eleven or twelve million dollars. So we didn't pledge it because we couldn't support it as a limited obligation bond or as a, without the backing of the general fund. Now, right now, we are seeing the collections from the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund of about twenty million dollars a year. And the debt service on this bond issue is going to be twelve million, right? Now, in order to kind of lock that up, what would be the effect if we were to pledge this and not make it a general obligation bond, but make it a limited obligation bond? What kind of financial considerations could we get? Is it feasible, more attractive, less attractive on the market? Better terms, less favorable terms on the market?
The way that the FLOA funds works in this authorization, even though that the general obligation is pledged to the bonds, the funds, the source of payment is the territorial education fund.
I understand.
The real property taxes go into that fund and the bonds are solely paid from that fund.
I understand.
So I don't, I don't see any, you know, financial or operational difference if you move to a bond issue that was secured solely by the territorial education fund. From a credit standpoint, you know, we'd have to look at historical real property taxes.
Right.
The rating agency would have to evaluate that. You know, based on the twenty million dollar number, you know, debt service coverage is about one fifty or so. So there's... It's, you know, it's really up to the rating agency as to whether or not it matters. Since the source of payment is the territorial education fund, I don't see any difference. I think if we could get a better rating on this bond issue based on the fact that we're segregating the funds from the general obligation, it's possible.
It's possible.
Yes, it's, it's, it's happened in the market recently where states that segregate certain funds to pay debt service are obtaining ratings that are higher than their general obligation.
That's exactly my point. And given the debt coverage ratio that we can have now with the increased collections, I really think that's something that we should explore. And have we issued an RFP in that manner? With these kind of terms and conditions, we might be able to explore that. But I guess that's something that Getca might still consider. But we won't know that until you, which leads me to my other question because of the bond indenture. And where is the bond indenture? It says there's an attachment A, but I haven't seen the attachment A.
Great, I believe we have a draft bond indenture based on the previous...
Well, we gotta do something because the law says it's appended and it's not being appended. So somebody's got a, either the committee, Senator Calvo's committee has to append that or in consultation with Getca. And the final question, just real quick, Mr. Chair, I know my time's up, is that the early redemption of bonds, that we will pay off these bonds early if our Section Thirty collections exceed a hundred million dollars and fifty percent of that will be... So in other words, never, because I just can't see us exceeding a hundred million dollars in Section Thirty revenues, when last year we went from fifty-six with a military expansion down to forty-two this year. So in effect, I just don't think, this is all window dressing, in my opinion, this early redemption of bonds, trying to make us feel good, make our children feel good that we might pay off these bonds early because we have more money. But we're never gonna see this thing kick into place. And it's just, it's, yeah, people can feel good that we promised to pay off early, but we only promise to pay off early and redeem the bonds if we have more than a hundred million dollars in Section Thirty revenues. And I just can't see that. Thank you.
All right, on Section One. Senator Espisho, you've exhausted your time on Section One.
Are we on round two?
We are on round two.
So I want to speak on round two.
No, we're done, you're done with round two.
How about round three? Well, there's a couple items that have not been...
Yeah, we're on Section One, you spoke twice. Are there any other speakers on Section One? Senator Shimizu, you may speak. He spoke once in round one.
I think you recognized me as Senator Shimizu. So that's why you say I spoke two times already.
No, I'm sorry.
So I'll be recognized now, Mr. Chairman?
No, you may not, you have your time. Senator Shimizu?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I was wondering, maybe you've recognized, you know, I have the wrong identity. But this is on Section M, approval by the Guam Economic Development and Commerce Authority. You know, that's why earlier I would have preferred to go section by section by section rather than jumping back and forth. It says here, Title Twelve Guam Code Annotated provides that agencies and instrumentality, Mr. Chair?
Proceed.
Shall issue bonds and other obligations only by means of and through the agency of Guam Economic Development. What it says here, no bonds authorized by this section shall be sold until the Board of Directors has adopted a resolution approving the sale. Is this gonna be done after we pass it or has that already been done earlier?
I believe under Getca statute, a resolution of the Board of Directors has to be passed after legislation authorizes the sale of bonds and prior to closing of the bonds. It's a condition upon closing.
Okay, so that, this was what we were talking about earlier at the beginning, that...
They're somewhat related, I think, under Getca statute.
And then on this same bond, and approval order is not required. I, this is, is this a standard boilerplate for the issues of the bond? Or is it a requirement that we put that in this language of legislation?
With regard to Getca's, Section M, I guess Section One M, under Getca statute, the Board of Directors has to pass a resolution as a condition of closing the bonds. So they'll pass, the Getca Board of Directors will pass a resolution that says, in accordance with our statute, you know, we authorize the bond issuance.
It's a Twelve GCA, Section Five, Zero, One, Zero, Three, A. The corporation shall not issue or sell the bonds without approval of the legislature for the terms and conditions of the bond. Okay, thank you. One more thing again, Mr. Chairman, and I think it's the Chair of Ways and Finance, Senator Calvo. I just wanted to raise this as a sidebar, food for thought. On Section K Three, sixteen million dollars to fund the payments of the COLA class awardees and also for sixteen million dollars to fund the past due income tax. As you know, we're just waiting in the wings. I'm just trying to see what actual procedure we can do to add a new section after I deal with some other housekeeping issues that, let me say hypothetically, because that's all I can talk about. If this passes, we have both Three and Four, and hypothetically, and hopefully, Bill One Sixty-eight passes, which only deals with two things, and that is the people's refund and the court ordered COLA passes. My concern is that will there be a mechanism upon which we can make offsetting so that it won't be two items, two bonds going out? One is in what we're discussing today for sixteen and the other is twenty. So if you can help me out with that, Mr. Chair?
Senator Shimizu, if you're talking about reconciliation of the redundant appropriations which may be contained in the hypothetical inclusion of Bill One Sixty-eight in a new chapter of this bill, we will entertain a motion of that if that comes to pass.
Yeah, and that would be a proper motion at that time. I had spoken to...
It would have to pass notwithstanding the House rules, which require ten votes.
To go back and...
To reconcile in the event that the both measures are included as part of this measure.
I wanted to speak openly with that so that at least I can, you know, make sure that we don't double adoption and especially in this tight money situation. So I really appreciate it, Mr. Chair, that that reconciliation is a, was a parliamentary process that can occur. Thank you.
We are on Section One. Are there any other speakers on Section One? If there are none, we will conclude with Section One at this time. Senator Barnes, you've spoken on Section One twice already, so you've exhausted your time. Yes, you have. You've spoken twice. Are there any other speakers on Section One? No. The clerk will attest to that you've spoken twice.
Well, then, then, can I get a confirmation from that, Mr. Chair? Because I've only spoken once.
With the clerk? Please check your notes and see whether or not the gentle lady has spoken or not twice on round one and round two. Yeah, that's right. We'll go ahead and take a brief recess so the clerk can find her notes with reference to round one and round two. Committee, the hall is back in order. Committee of the Hall is back in order. Um, because the gentle lady from the...
[laughing]
... longtime friend of mine is so adamant about getting her, um, time on the second round. Although the clerk has, and you will attest, the clerk has, uh, explained to your satisfaction that you've had both rounds, correct?
[laughing]
True?
We can still agree to disagree on that matter.
Is it true?
It might be the truth, but if, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
I, I will grant you one minute.
Thank you.
All right.
And again, uh, Mr. Chair, I extend that, those thank yous and I really appreciate this. And it's just probably a, a point of, uh, clarification or, or verification on item number N, approval of voters not required. And it specifically states, notwithstanding Title three Guam Code Annotated citing the sections, the issuance of the bonds authorized by this section shall not be subject to the approval offer placed before the voters of Guam. Mr. Chair, my only concern is if I can have anybody yield, uh, to this question, um, uh, in reference to what, um, how this actual section got in to this, uh, because based on, on, on what was required, anything over the twenty-five million would have to go to the voters, uh, for a vote, uh, to the people of Guam to vote. So I just need a clarification of how this section got, uh, uh, admitted into the proposal.
We'll go ahead and ask, uh, Getca to respond to that.
Getca or to the financial?
Go ahead. Tony? Committee of the Hall is back in order. Senator Calvo?
And yes, I will yield to the question. And in regards to that particular section N, again, much, much of this bill, our components are, are also what was contained in twenty-eight dash one four nine. So when the language was written up in this particular, um, the refinancing of the nineteen ninety-three bond, there was some carryover language. So in N, that's basically carryover language that was used. I hate to say template, but obviously the, I'm gonna say template. Uh, there, there was a language that was existing in twenty-eight one four nine fairly con- and this, this particular provision was consistent with what was in twenty-eight one four nine. Okay?
Thank you, uh, Speaker. Um, Mr. Chair, I, I bring this, um, question of concern up only because based on the previous, um, uh, laws that have been, um, passed, that there was a specific provision that said that if we were gonna take it out to the, to the, over the twenty-five million, that we'd have to bring it to the people. And I can, and, and again, um, just noting for the record, I don't have to agree with what the good oversight's saying. I just, well, we'll take it and try and work with it. But thank you.
Are there any other speakers on section one? Senator Lujan?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I, I, I do have a problem with, uh, with subsection N in the, uh, in regards to, I remember sitting in this body again when we approved, when we had, uh, again, um, stated that, um, any bonds and, and taxes have to go up here before, before the people, um, to be voted on. And so I have a real problem that now we're not requiring that. You know, when you exclude the boss from the decision-making process, that's a big problem. And so, uh, my amendment is to delete, uh, subsection N in, in that and that we have to have the approval of the boss to, um, to move forward with this. Again, the exclusion of the boss, you know what happens?
Okay. Um, so the motion is to strike, um, section N. Any discussion? No discussion. There is an objection. As many as in favor, say again. Yes?
Yeah, th- thank you. Um, again, this is to delete that entire section M. N, oh, you want delete Nancy, approval of voter is not required. I, I, I mentioned this earlier and I had, and I think Senator Blas, you had answered on that specific issue. So there's a motion to delete it. Would that impact or cost some, uh, of the bond market or bond people to, to worry about that?
Um, I, I think it's a, it's a timing, um, thing. If, if it takes, I'm not sure how long a voter referendum takes to put, be put in process. Um, the, this financing in particular is somewhat market sensitive and in order to capture the, the savings on the refunding of the nineteen ninety-three bonds, um, we would have to close this financing by November first. So, you know, if, I don't know how long it takes for an actual vote, um, but to, to the extent it takes longer than that timeframe, um, then it would impact the economics of the financing.
So it's really the time-sensitive issue. It's not something that would discourage the, uh, the bond mo- you know, market from...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Vespecho?
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I just want to, um, state for the public record, uh, whether or not, uh, bill one sixty-eight, the two hundred fifty million dollar bond bond proposal makes it into this bill, that, uh, in our version, uh, we're also, um, setting aside the approval of voters not required. But in that version, uh, it, it deals with restructuring existing debt. Now, I believe in the decision of, uh, the government at the time not to pay, uh, tax refunds or not to pay COLA and pay operations instead, that's when the voter should have had, uh, exercised their right to vote. But in this case, in this version, we are borrowing for operations and I think that our people absolutely should have, uh, the say-so on whether or not we should borrow, uh, potentially seventy-seven million dollars for operations. And so I rise, uh, in full support of Senator Lujan's bill. And to clarify that in the two hundred fifty million dollar version, it's just restructuring, uh, existing debt. So it's totally different, um, scenario. But principally, I believe that the voter should decide if we're borrowing for operations and that's, that's when they should also have decided whether or not we were going to pay in lieu of paying tax refunds or COLA payments and up, uprunning the, uh, operation of the government. That's when the people should decide. So here, we have to, uh, follow the law which requires approval of voters not required.
All right. On the amendment, there's a motion to delete, there's an objection. All right. Sure, sure. Senator Pangolino?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, this, um, Title three Guam Code Annotated seventeen three one one to seventeen twelve, requiring voter approval. Um, there were really two components of the original, uh, bill that placed this policy in the law. The first component was, of course, no new tax increases, um, would require voter approval and that. Um, and then the second component is this component. The first component was a, um, result of a, uh, bill that was introduced by, uh, our speaker, uh, Speaker Mark Forbes at that time. And then the second component, which is this law, was, uh, introduced by myself. Uh, and it limits, um, or it allows the people to have a voice in the issuance of debt over twenty-five million dollars for general obligation debt. And the reason for doing that was because we wanted to be able to start planning our capital projects, start planning our financial, uh, long-term financial commitments, rather than let's go to the bond market and let's borrow money because we need it for today or we need it to make ends meet and so forth. And so I'm absolutely convinced that that's the right way to go with regards to, uh, having people approve debt issue of more than twenty-five million dollars. Uh, and again, mister, uh, mister Chair, that was the, the whole thing, philosophy was that we begin to, to plan things, look at them, um, study them, structure them, uh, and then take it to the people. Uh, and, and this, of course, does away with that right that's been conferred upon the people, uh, by the, uh, inclusion of this waiver, uh, of that provision to this borrowing. And I definitely do not, uh, support waiving the rights of the people, uh, for this bond issue. Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers on the amendment? If there are none, there's been an objection, raise. As many as in favor, please raise your hand. Again, as many as in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion fails. All right. Any other speakers on section one? If there are none, oh, okay, we'll go ahead and take a dinner break. We will be back here at, um, eight thirty. We'll reconvene at eight thirty.